City of Vacaville City Council Meeting for March 22, 2022. And we have a roll call, please.
Council Agency Authority Member Sullivan?
Here.
Stockton?
Here.
Ritchie?
Here.
Silva?
Here.
Wiley?
And I think you have two of your tabs up, so you close one of them.
Yes, I took it, I turned it off, and I'm having issues with my virtual background, but I'm here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Chair Rollit?
I am here.
So now, we will stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, three, approve the agenda. Mr. City Manager, any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Not tonight, here.
Okay, I'll move approval for someone to move.
Sullivan, I'll motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Member Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rollit?
Aye. Move to item four, approval of a minute. Entertain motion.
Sullivan, I'll motion.
Thank you, sir.
Stockton, I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Rollit?
Aye. Item five, presentations, we have them. So we'll move to item six A. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is the selection of a final City Council election district boundary map and introduction of an ordinance. Michelle Formbrug, our City Clerk, is here to make a brief presentation and introduce the subject.
And before we get started, tonight's public hearing is also being provided in three additional languages, as well as English. Tonight, we have Spanish, Tagalog, and American Sign Language available. Please set your language translation selection, which can be found in the lower ribbon on the right, to the language you wish to hear the presentation in. If you would like to make a comment during the public comment period, please let the moderator know which language you wish for translation. This will allow our translators to mute themselves and to prepare to provide a translation of your public comment into English. Questions or comments in other languages may be sent to cityclerk@cityofvacaville.com and will be responded to within as soon as possible. For American Sign Language comments, please type those into the chat for translation. So tonight's presentation will take a look at the final draft maps that have been prepared by BBK, the city's redistricting consultants. Tonight, we have Joanna Gin and Todd Leishman of BBK to look at the final draft maps and hopefully introduce an ordinance, amending the final council electoral district boundaries. And with that, I'll hand it over to Joanna and Todd.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Under the Fair Maps Act, four public hearings are required for the redistricting process, and tonight is that fourth public hearing. As Michelle mentioned, my colleague Todd will also be joining us tonight. I will have to drop off after my presentation, but Todd can also answer any questions. He's also familiar with the map options. So with that, I will get started. And there is actually a short agenda. It's to review the draft maps and hopefully, if council desires, to select a preferred map for the introduction of the ordinance. This is a map of the existing districts. And we've discussed this in quite some detail. This slide also includes the 2020 census data overlaid onto those existing districts. The city has a population of 95,909. With six districts, the ideal population for each district would be 15,984. You'll notice that District One has a percentage deviation of 12.59%, which means that it has more than the ideal population. And District Four has the opposite issue, which has a negative 10.67% deviation. The spread between those numbers results in a total deviation of 23.26%. And all three numbers that I just mentioned are above the 10% that is allowed under the US Supreme Court rulings, and so the population will have to be rebalanced. So again, the findings are that the total deviation is at 23.26%, creating a majority-minority district may not be possible due to the demographic makeup of the community, but I will also discuss the possibility of having a minority coalition district in one of the map options. And again, the district boundaries will need to be adjusted for population rebalance. So as background, at the last public hearing on March 8, there were six map options that were discussed. Map Options 1 and 2 were prepared by BBK, and Map Options 3 to 6 were prepared by members of the public. A seventh draft map option was originally posted. However, it was determined that option was a duplicate of Map Option 5 and therefore was deleted. At the third public hearing, council provided direction to return with Map Options 1, 4, and 5, and specifically requested modifications to draft Map Options 4 and 5. The demographer then created a new Map Option 8, which essentially makes those modifications to Map Options 4 and 5. It was discovered after the third public hearing that day's redistricting had included a non-city parcel in Map Options 4 and 5. And so you'll see those issues remedied in Map Option 8. The two map options before you tonight, therefore, are Map Options 1 and 8. And those maps were posted on the city's webpage in compliance with the Fair Maps Act. Okay, and with that, I will provide an overview of the two map options, with the first being Map Option 1. Map Option 1 is being presented because council had expressed a desire to keep the Leisure Town community of interest intact in District 2. And this is done by retaining the use of the I-80 as a boundary between Districts 1 and 2. The other two map options that council was interested in at the last public hearing, Map Options 4 and 5, had split up Leisure Town just south of the I-80, where there is a commercial and residential transition. So here, there was no population change. 2, 3, and 6, those districts remain wholly intact. And that is also how the Leisure Town community of interest in District 2 was preserved because there was no change to the population. And the total deviation for Map Option 1 is 9.06%. Map Option 1 also retains the core of the existing districts. It creates compact voting districts. There were some small shifts in population among voters in Districts 1, 4, and 5, but it does not create a majority-minority voting district. And with that, I'll move on to Map Option 8. Map Option 8 was prepared by the city's redistricting consultant in response to comments received at the third public hearing, as I mentioned earlier. It is a combined revision of Map Options 4 and 5. It is population balanced with a deviation of 9.76%. And the districts are compact and contiguous. Leisure Town is kept wholly within District 2, and District 4 does not extend below Almo Drive. And so there's actually a smoother line, and it creates more of a compact district. As Vice Mayor Roberts mentioned, the Map Option 5 had included a commercial area north of Hume Way that was moved from District 3 to District 4 in response to constituent comments that there be a commercial area within District 4, and that was something that Councilmember Sullivan had noted, too, that there was a desire to have commercial areas and job centers within District 4. I did want to note that the I-80 is not completely a divider between Districts 2 and 1. The commercial areas along the I-80 that are drawn in District 1, where Orange Drive meets Leisure Town Road, and a portion of the auto mall had to be included in District 1. Because unlike the commercial area north of Hume Way in District 4, there was a small residential population over here in the affected area along Orange and Leisure Town Road. And if we had moved these census blocks to District 2, it would have resulted in a total deviation of 12%, which is impermissible. Also in District 6, as was previously noted, the Trapp School District is kept wholly intact, so Cambridge Elementary and Foxborough Elementary are in District 2. Map Option 8 also only defers 435 voters from the 2022 election cycle to the 2024 election cycle, whereas the modified Map Option 5 would have shifted 1,578 voters to 2024, and Map Option 4 would have shifted 1,404 voters to 2024. The total deviation for this map option is at 9.76%, so it's just under the 10%. I also wanted to point out that District 3 also does not have a majority-minority district, but it does have a coalition of minorities within this district. So the findings are that the total deviation is below the acceptable range at 9.76%. It does incorporate council feedback from the third public hearing to make adjustments to Map Options 4 and 5. It does not create a majority-minority voting district, but does create a minority coalition district in District 3. So the next steps are to receive input on the maps and communities of interest from council and the public, and hopefully for council to select a preferred map and introduce an ordinance adopting that final map. And so here we are today at the fourth public hearing. The recommendation would be for council to introduce the ordinance attached to the staff report at tonight's meeting and to insert the preferred council map and the appropriate legal descriptions in that ordinance. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and Todd and I are happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to open it up to public comment. I see no public comment. I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the City Council and entertain a motion or listen to anybody. Looks like Vice Mayor Roberts had their hand up first.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, adopt the recent, they made Map 8, because it took all the council comments into consideration and just Maps 4 and 5 to meet their concerns.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second Sullivan.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that, though.
We're in the middle of the vote. You can vote no, and then we can come back if it doesn't pass.
I think there's already major. No.
It's just yes or no, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
I would like to hear the amendment, so I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
I guess I'll vote no to hear Councilmember Sullivan's amendment.
Councilmember Sullivan?
I'll vote no for the same reasons.
Is that four, noes yet?
Mayor Rollit, I just needed to get clarification. Mayor Rollit?
Oh, no. I'll entertain a new motion.
Motion to approve with the amendment that the... Oh, I don't know how to even direct this on Zoom. The border of District 3 include go along the Allison driveway, and then, so up, up north, Brown Street, and then hooks back down the Allison driveway, to incorporate the east part of Cullen Street residence.
I'm going to, I'm going to go to the city attorney. Are we... City Attorney, did you hear what he's trying to motion?
I did. I think we would need to hear from the demographer to see...
Going to change the...
How that impacts the map?
Right.
And the, and the population.
I mean, I think that's just a hill. It's green space, so I don't know if that would really matter.
Hi, this Joanna. We would have to analyze that and come back with a revised map if there wasn't a modification.
Silva, do you want to...
Joanna? Is it possible to see where that boundary is? Does it include residential?
Yeah, let's clarify that. Can someone bring up the map?
We could bring it up on Google Maps, Joanna. Is that possible?
Yes.
The attachment. Can we zoom in above to the left where it says Nugget Market? Can we zoom in to where there's a blend between blue and red or pink? I'm just referring to the residents along the east part of Cullen Street, which sees there's a Goodwill store. Yeah, so the folks on the right, north, the Opportunity House, the folks on the right side of Brown Street. So my, the current line goes up, all the way up, what does it do? It goes up Brown Street for District 3, it goes up Brown Street, and then hooks backs down Browns Valley Parkway, and then goes, and run along Allison Drive, either way. And then connects back to where you have it now. I would think it'd be minimal impact.
Yes, we would need to come back with it, and because that map has not been posted with the modifications or the information. And Todd, would you like to add in any information to on that?
Hi, Mayor and Council, this is Todd Leishman. I would turn on my video, but apparently that's been disabled. But yeah, that was my thought exactly, is that if you make any change to the map, you're going to need to post it for another seven days, and you can't adopt it tonight.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, we could post for, actually, three days because it's within the 28 days prior to the required adoption date.
Thank you, Joanna. That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
We're not going to see each other for another few weeks. Councilmember Silva, I'll let you drive this, however you want to do it, if you want to push it off and...
Can we...
We draw it.
Can we hear the other council members first, please?
I see council members, Stockton.
Thank you. I, I would just want to know what the numbers are and how they're affected by this, if they are. One of the things, you know, I'm okay with either map. I'll be honest with you. I looked at both of them. One of the things that I will say, you know, I recognize that we're, we're going to find a problem like this, you know, on either of these maps, I think. But we've had some success, you know, at least in advocating when we have some overlap between different districts. And so, and I would just commit to you, you know, Councilmember Silva, I recognize wanting to keep everybody together, but certainly, you know, I think that sometimes these provide opportunities for two council members to work together for a certain area as well. So I'm okay with either map, but I, but I think we're, you know, for some reason, the, the difference or the delineation number seems to be much larger than it was with the Maps 4 and 5 before, which I think is putting us pretty close. And so I would definitely want to see that number. I'm not opposed to your amendment, but I also am, am ready and prepared to represent the folks in that area if, if this is what we decide to go with.
Councilmember Wiley?
Thanks. So, Councilmember Silva, can you explain, was that part of your group prior to? So you're just asking for that particular line to be back to where it currently is? And then what are the number difference, like, is 1 still high and 3 kind of small on that table? Because I'd like to look at that table one more time.
Well, I asked her her first question. Yes, it currently is under District Three. The residents along the east part of Brown Street, north of Bennett Hill, Bennett Court, and east of Cullen Street.
Okay.
However, the west part of Markham Avenue is currently District One.
And then that's been added to your district?
Right.
Okay. Could we see the table just a minute for for eight? So then three would be a little bit less than minus, you know, minus three because it's gaining some. And one would be a little bit more than minus four because it's losing some. So it probably wouldn't exceed the nine point seven six, but it would change it that way. But I agree that we can't really, if we don't act on one of these specific maps, then we have to wait.
Actually, Mayor and Council, if I may, this is Todd Leishman again. I believe that if we look at this table, we'll see that that nine point seven six spread that we are dealing with in the lower right hand corner, it's driven by six at the top end, District Six, and District One at the bottom end. So if they lose more, that's going to increase the total spread. And we're awfully close already. But we'd have to see the numbers to be sure, right?
Thanks for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor, this is Adam. Can I jump in here real quick?
I have Vice Mayor Roberts first and then, well, Roberts, do you want to acquiesce to the city manager?
Oh, yeah, city manager. You can go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we do have the option of a special meeting that we have already on the books for next week, Tuesday, March twenty nine. If there is any desire, collective desire by the council to explore any new maps that we haven't done thus far, we have the ability to go ahead and grant the opportunity to come back with the revision to explore whether or not that meets the criteria and present that to council. But that would be our last opportunity to make a formal decision on the on the map.
So I I personally wouldn't want to, you know, we call special meetings for special meetings. I and I don't want, there is a possibility I could miss next Tuesday. I don't want to miss this. This is an important division. But I I still have Vice Mayor Roberts' hand up.
Yeah, that's what we talked about last week. If you try to squeeze the districts and put Leisure Town back into just or not even all of them, just like a street of Leisure Town back in a District Two, you're going to have to squeeze somewhere and the only other place I can go is in a District Three. And so it's either you make that Markham neighborhood complete or you make Leisure Town complete. So you have the the choice of the two. Because like squeezing a balloon is going to go one side or the other. So I mean, there's also the previous maps of four or five, which are very, very similar. But then with either of those, you'll lose that one street off of Orange Drive. That that kind of pushes into Leisure Town a little bit. I just checked on Dave's redistricting that area that Councilmember Silva was talking about between Allison and Brown Street. It's about five hundred persons per the redistricting app. And that's all I had to say on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I, Councilmember Silva, I'm going to press you for what direction you want to go.
You know, something in my guts telling me keep it together. If the council feels that, you know, it moves forward, then I'm I'm I'd be proud to support that as well.
You want to make a motion, Councilmember Silva?
Sure, I make a motion to amend this. Sorry, make sure it's map eight. To expand District Three line north of Brown Street.
Why don't you make the motion just to table it until next meeting?
I'm sorry, when do we need to vote on it? Or when does it need to go in?
Either we got to vote on one or eight. And if you want to amend eight, then just motion to table this until the next meeting, right? City manager or or do we have to give direction?
Specifically, you would need to tell us.
Okay, I apologize.
You would need to tell us what changes you want and that we would bring that back to March twenty nine for final action.
But that that won't even be a motion and a vote. That would just be direction again, right? We would be motioning and voting not to to do any action tonight besides bring it back.
Correct.
So do we need a motion and a second and a roll call vote to table it and have Councilmember Silva give direction on what he'd like to see the next time we
Yes, please.
Okay, so Councilmember Silva, go ahead.
So I'd like to give, so I got mixed up in there, but so number one, I like we keep map eight as is, and then we introduce another map that that will that includes District Three being extended northbound along Brown Street and then comes down Browns Valley Parkway and then down Allison. The goal is to include east of Brown Street, Bennett Court, east of Upper Cullen. And then we see that we see the demographics on that. If it doesn't fit, then then we support map.
That's your direction. Can you make the motion to table it till next meeting?
Yeah, a motion to table it to next meeting.
Okay, I'll second that. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I want to add also a minute to, sorry, I have a hand up, but the right time?
You know what? I guess I should have made sure that everybody was good, so.
I'll be fast, thirty seconds.
Well, it's going to, we're going to have to re, oh, no, you're going to give direction. So all we're doing right now is is tabling it. You can give you can give direction after we vote to tell them what you'd like to see, so we we can move it, move the maps around.
Okay, sorry.
So I I'm going to stick with the motion. Did I get a second? I apologize. Oh, I seconded it. Okay, let's roll call vote.
Councilmember Ritchie?
So yes is a vote to table it till. Correct.
And yeah, and then I'll then I'll give you an opportunity.
I'll respect Silva's table.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolet?
Hi. Okay, Councilmember Ritchie, would you like to give direction to the team?
Sorry, sorry about the mix up.
Oh, that's okay.
It actually touches the conversation where it's kind of what Silva's saying, I think Stockton, you know, I'm fully okay with map eight, you know. There's a certain area that we we go into his district, but I I know I know Councilman Stockton would do an exceptional job representing any any member of that community. There's a little small community on Leisure Town. It is a mobile home manufacturer park. You know, I understand that intimately on the dynamics of mobile home manufacturer parks. That group of people represent perfectly with Leisure Town. There's two characteristics you have in mobile homes and manufacturer parks. You have fixed income and percentage of the residents are predominantly above age fifty five. So their voice would be very congruent and should align with the voices of Leisure Town. Because a fixed income in a rising, a rising environment of inflation is paramount to make sure that their voice is heard along with others. If it goes to Stockton, I know it'll take care of them. It's his father and his his family also is Leisure Town. So therefore, he would be an absolute advocate for that group of residents there too. So either way, I'm good to go. But if we're at it, why not see if that would make a big difference? I don't want to cause problems. If it stays this way, I know I'll be elated to see Stockton represent them. If not, I would love to keep on going. Great. Okay, I know I do see Councilmember Stockton.
All right, I'll be quick. I would also like to see more than just two maps. If if we can come up with some other solutions, that way we don't have to send you back to for for some little, small area of a community that you may not be as intimately knowledgeable about as we are. So I I would just encourage the you that are working on this to maybe even consider crossing the freeway in another location from from District One into District Three and into one in into two. Maybe on the east side, you know, south of the Nut Tree Airport or something like that to keep that Brown Street community together. Just some, just some additional options. So that way it's not, we don't feel like we're pigeonholed because I think we are getting to the end of the time allotment that we have before we have to make a decision. And so having more than one option would be, I think, helpful.
So thank you, Councilmember Stockton. I would just, for the group's benefit, you know, we've been trying to take in all the comments that we received to date on this process and whittle them down. And I think, you know, this this last round is resulted in in another new map with very specifics. And I think, you know, we can absolutely respond to those specific requests, but to speculate on what neighborhoods should or should not be in at this stage of the game would be very difficult for our consultant to to grasp as to which areas need to be modified or not. So what I I think we can certainly do is bring back maps one and eight and then a modified version based on the direction that we received tonight with regards to District Three and District Two. If you have something in mind specifically for your district, I would encourage you to provide that to us tonight so that we can provide a finite number of map options at the next special meeting because at that meeting, we will absolutely need the council to select one map to go forward to finalize for the April seventeenth deadline.
Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, I just, I guess I was getting kind of hung up as well on the the deviation with the current proposal. And part of me is, and forgive me if I missed it, but I think it's to account for potential growth. I guess the other thing, I really, you know, it's hard enough. I think having a better way, I think what I what I'm not looking forward to is in ten years. What would be great is in ten years, we don't have to like, you know, sit here and try to redraw the map, I guess is what I was thinking. But anyways, I just, really, I'm just trying to share that thought with the council. But I think originally I was going to ask for something with the lower deviation, but I think with the current deviation, I wasn't taking into account potential future growth or planned future growth. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I just wanted, I really pay attention to the, I really appreciate the the demographer team for what they said. They made a comment about the area. I also make sure they know I was listening intently. If it does cause cause an issue with the deviation, that one section I highlighted, they said it would. So I'm very cognizant aware that it would. If it does, please, I don't want to cause problems in other districts just to earn that back and cause problems in Silva's or no. I don't want to make the whole process be out of whack of the deviation. I do know you did say those four hundred something homes in that in the area will push D two into a out of the deviation area. So you know, please, we have one shot back at this one by the apple. Get it right in a few days. If that isn't, if that is going to cause a large problem, please move on from that. I'm totally okay with having it represented. And D one, as I know, Stockton will do a great job representing the group. So please don't get hung up on that past the point where if it doesn't make mathematical sense.
I think they could still bring it back to you and show you if it didn't make mathematical sense. Okay, I think we did that one. So hopefully we'll move on. Item six B, I am going to recuse myself and hand it over to the Vice Mayor to avoid any potential conflicts of interest. I'm going to recuse myself from six B regarding the Oak Grove Apartments. I do not believe that I have a conflict on this matter, but out of abundance caution, I will recuse myself for participation at this time until I receive direction from the FPPC. So I will come back. Vice Mayor Roberts, it's yours. Please, someone text me or call me when you guys finish up. Thank you.
Will do, sir. All right, city manager, before I go ahead and get started, item six B, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the city council. This next item is related to the Oak Grove Apartment Project. It includes two resolutions and ordinance for first reading. I'll turn it over to Albertino, our senior planner for presentation.
Thank you, city manager. This is Albertino with the Community Development Department. And the project before you tonight is the Oak Grove Apartments. Next slide. The request before you today is to construct a sixty unit affordable, age restricted, senior apartment project. A two point one one acre site located at four seventy five West Monovista Avenue. This project includes four entitlements, environmental review, which is a mitigated negative declaration, a zoning map amendment, a density bonus, and a plan development. Next slide. Some background about this project started in July of twenty twenty with a disposition development and loan agreement before city council. They approved a sixty seven unit affordable supportive housing project. That's just that disposition development and loan agreement. And the important information about this background is that it did go through a couple of iterations. We held two neighborhood meetings during the review period, and the applicant decided to change the project and revise it to fifty five units that also included affordable and supportive housing. And that happened in May. City council acted on a zone change in May of twenty twenty one, provided some direction to city staff to consider alternate sites. And then the project was again revised, brought before city council in January of this year for sixty units, but instead of affordable supportive housing, it was revised to senior restricted housing. And then the city held another neighborhood meeting and presented this project before Planning Commission in February of this year, which the Planning Commission voted for three to recommend approval of this project. Next slide. So this project is on a site of two point one one acres. It contains two parcels. The project would require a zone change to add a residential overlay onto the site for multifamily housing. It includes sixty units with a density of twenty eight point four units per acre. There are two three story buildings on this project that will contain units ranging in floor area from six hundred square feet to seven hundred ninety five square feet. A site plan has sixty six parking stalls with access provided on West Monovista Avenue and South Orchard Avenue. The architecture is a modern farmhouse design, and this project does include exceptions or concessions for development standards. Next slide. This project site shows the two three story buildings laid out on the project with access provided on the two wood budding streets and parking provided on the interior of the site abutting the existing multifamily site to the east and the city's fire station and single family homes to the south. Next slide. This view shows what the three story building would look like along West Monovista Avenue. A contemporary farmhouse design with pitched roofs and varying materials on the exterior. Next slide. And this is the other three story building as viewed from South Orchard Avenue. Note that this particular entrance would be gated. Next slide. This project does include a density bonus and concessions. California government code does identify regulations for cities to comply with. Those regulations say that cities must grant density bonus with development standards exceptions for projects that contain affordable units. Stay Law says that if a project contains fifteen percent of the units for very low income households, that that project is entitled to a fifty percent density increase and three concessions or exceptions to development standards. In this case, the project is proposing one hundred percent of the units for very low income. And the applicant is requesting concessions for private open space specifically for reducing the number of balconies for this project from sixty to forty two and then also reducing the ground floor balcony size from one hundred square feet to fifty nine square feet. Next slide. The city did conduct an evaluation of environmental impacts in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act. Our findings found that the project would produce impacts, but that those impacts could be mitigated to a less insignificant impact, and therefore we prepared a mitigated negative declaration. Those impacts were related to the recent. Those impacts were related to the resources that are identified on the slide in front of you. We circulated this environmental document for public review for thirty days, and we received public comments from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Toxic Substance Control. These were standard comments that had already been incorporated into the environmental document. Next slide. So in the conclusion of the analysis and the presentation brought before Planning Commission, there is support for this project because it does meet the required findings for those four entitlements that were described earlier. It would comply with general plan and zoning policies. It would comply with development standards as amended or the exceptions granted to the density bonus. It provides additional senior affordable housing units for the community. It's well designed, and it would be located near shopping at the Glenbrook Plaza. Next slide. So there is a recommendation for the council as provided by the Planning Commission. It would be to adopt the mitigated negative declaration. It would introduce a subject ordinance amending the municipal code by change of the zoning map for that zoning map amendment. And it would be to approve the density bonus and plan development requests for the Oak Grove Apartments subject to conditions of approval. That's it for the presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here with their design team to answer any questions.
Any comments from the staff? We'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Crystal, can you go ahead and open up Eric Cruz Padilla's mic?
Eric, I've opened your mic. Eric, you may need to clear your mic.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Eric Padilla, lifelong resident of Vacaville, raising two children here. Was raised here by my father. Just me and him, and did a good job raising me, took care of me. Today is a day I have an opportunity to take care of him. He is a senior as well as a United States Army vet. He struggles, you know, he's on a fixed income monthly, you know, to pay rent. Loves Vacaville as much as I do and is committed to stay. We desperately need affordable housing for seniors like my father and and a lot of other fathers and mothers out in Vacaville, you know, and this project does, just, it does that. It may be a drop in the bucket of current needs, but it's a start. We have entire market rate villages going up by target that only help people with good incomes, you know? And Eden Housing seems to be doing right by the residents here with their proposal, and I ask that you do the same. Approve this project, house our seniors, you know? They're, you know, they're mothers and fathers that raise children here in Vacaville. They deserve that type of respect and allowed to live a peaceful life here in Vacaville in this beautiful city. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Crystal, can you go ahead and open up Lori Jones's mic?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Lori. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. First, I want to say that I agree with this project. So that is not a question. Yes, I wish the buildings were not three stories, but Vacaville does need senior apartments, and this is a good start. I also want to start by saying thank you to the City Council. You listen to us, you listen to the community, and you required that they adjusted the project to meet the needs of the residential neighborhood as well as providing senior housing. So again, I thank you very much. But there are still some issues associated with the points that Eden Housing brought up during the Planning Commission meeting. Allowance of three people in a one bedroom and five people in a two bedroom is not residential, but warehousing is and is not a sustainable model. And also, I wanted to point out that the five people in a two bedroom was not part and was not brought up during the Planning Commission meeting. Eden Housing stated that the number of people that the maximum number of people per unit is not common and would be the exception with most of the apartments being housing only one or two people. But you and I both know that the minute you approve this project and we leave this meeting, they can do whatever they want and house up to a hundred and sixty five people in the one bedrooms and twenty five people in the two bedroom units. This is a shockingly, shockingly large number of people for this project. There's also the issue associated with that only one of the occupants per unit is required to be fifty five years and older. So calling this a senior project is not actually true. So only one of the people in the unit has to be considered a senior. So this is something that I think needs to also be brought up and to be managed. I'm not suggesting that you reject the project, but I am requesting that the residential occupancy and makeup of the tenant and the effect on the neighborhood be monitored and adjusted if it's considered unacceptable. Lastly, I would like to point out that like Housing First as part of the original project was not part of the project description, the occupancy volume and the tenant makeup were not part of the current project description until the report of this meeting. I am disappointed in our planning department, and I ask the council to demand that we have more transparency from our staff because they do understand what's important to us, but they choose not to add it to our descriptions and point it out, and we end up finding things out during just the conversation as part of meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. All right, can we go ahead and open up the mic for phone number, Andy in four four one?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jamie. I've been a resident here of Vacaville for thirty nine years. I'm a small business owner with a husband and two children. This project is very important for me, or important to me, due to my father's current situation. My father was evicted from his home last year due to his rent being raised or increased, and he can no longer afford it. With that being said, he was homeless. We ended up having to purchase him a trailer that I currently make payments on monthly. He had to relocate to Ria Vista, which of course is close to thirty minutes away from his family here. And he is also having a roommate in a twenty foot trailer just to be able to pay for the space, which is actually located at a campsite. I feel that it's very important that we have senior living that's affordable here in Vacaville. So these seniors can live, and they have their families close to them. I ask that you guys please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, can you go ahead and open up Paula Tashby's line?
Hi there. Thank you for hearing me. Can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I agree that we definitely need senior housing. That's top priority. However, with this project, it, I think there needs to be some restrictions on what the developers are doing here because when you look at this and you have three people per one bedroom and you have five people per two bedroom, first of all, that doesn't make sense. There's a parking lot for sixty six cars, and then you look, you do the numbers on how many vehicles are going to be there. And already on that street, all the street parking is taking up. So that's, that's an issue. And then another big part of it is if you have only one person who's designated as a senior for the one bedroom or the two bedroom, then you potentially have others moving in that are not designated as seniors. And I've seen that in my own experience. My mom had a senior friend who was in a similar situation like this. He had some so-called family members come in. I think two or three of them took advantage of the living situation. They were doing drugs, doing all sorts of things in there. And all of them got kicked out, and thus the senior was kicked out on the street. And so I think that, again, yes, we definitely need lower income. We need senior housing. But this, if, if folks look at this area, it's already so congested. There's no parking. And it's really, there's so many other places that City of Vacaville could do this. It's, it's really going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, can you go ahead and open up Christine Golems' line?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for giving us time to respond to the proposal. I'd like to reiterate what some of the spokespersons have already said, basically all of the spokespersons up to this time. And that's that we agree that senior housing is necessary. And we're pleased that the council has moved in that direction. However, the fact that only one senior is required per unit just dilutes what the intention of the change was, which was to house seniors. And I do agree with the concerns that large families of all ages and so on really is not, in my mind, what should be planned for this development. Also, as you increase the numbers of people in each of the units, there is a strong likelihood, as was mentioned in the previous caller, of drastically increasing the number of people who have vehicles, which presents the parking problem than the street problem. Even if individuals are employed in the other residence, I do not know if they have to meet any economic qualification, if their residency in an apartment is means based. But the effect is that many people will have vehicles and some have a work vehicle and a personal vehicle. This is very common. It's common with people who live in many, many apartments and all over Vacaville. So those are my two concerns, is that we really restrict it more to seniors living in these units than extended families living in the units. And of the parking slots that are already planned, how many of those are open that not, they're not charging stations, they're not social service parking lots, they're not management parking spaces? How many of them are just for residents to pull a car, a car in and park it? That question has never really been answered in all of the meetings that I've attended. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Crystal, can you go ahead and open up Kyle Swarren's line?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Kyle Swarren. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Eden Housing and their Elk Grove Senior Living project. We have a developer who has shown they are a good partner. If it's creating good jobs for our residents with labor standards or listening to residents and a counsel on their concerns, they have listened to everyone and has taken it into consideration. They have downsized the project. They meet the parking ratio more than other senior living facilities, which is normally point seven, point seven five parking spaces per unit, while this project is one parking space per unit. They have taken away the family first aspect of the development. Now given us a project that's worthy to our community. So many residents create a livelihood here in Vacaville and has nowhere to go when they retire or become of age. Some of those residents are neighbors, and some of them are family members. Let's not forget about our seniors, and let's stop forcing them out of the City of Vacaville. Let's approve this development, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you go ahead and open up Alicia Mannion's line?
Hi, thank you. I wanted to, first, I wanted to thank the City Council and the Planning Commission, staff and the developer, everyone that was involved to make this project a better project for the neighborhood in consideration of all the concerns of the neighbors. So I really appreciate that. I think this is, you know, this is really different than something I wouldn't have expected this to happen, you know, ten years ago. So I think this is a great change. And the Planning Commission meeting, especially the most recent one, two of the planning commissioners had, they asked a lot of great questions, and they had some, expressed some concerns and expressed recommendation. I hope City Council was able to hear the last planning commission with regard to this particular project. And in the end, I hope that we can implement some of the recommendations from Planning Commission for future projects like this so that we have better outcomes. And I see this already even with the Allison Apartment Project. I mean, that's really, it's already improved since the initial recommendation or proposal from the developer. So, but I have a couple of questions based on the discussion today. So the occupancy, I think it's normally six people for, for like a regular home. So what is the normal rule for occupancy in a one bedroom, studio or two bedroom? I don't know if there's an ordinance. I don't know what the normal rule is. The second question I have is, I'm hearing concerns that there only has to be one senior per unit. But is the, is it the requirement that the senior executes the agreement? Or can a younger person live there and they can execute the agreement to the extent, say, a senior doesn't meet the income requirement? So I'm just wondering how that's going to work. And, and a lot of seniors need caretakers. So I'm, I'm not necessarily concerned about having an extra person because a lot of seniors, like my mom, they, they need a caretaker. And I was wondering if there was a parking issue. Is there a way Eden Housing can have an arrangement with the property owner across the street? Maybe there could be some designated spots there for extra parking. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, I'm here from staff. I'd like to address Alicia Mannion's questions.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would it be prudent to conclude the comments and then we can have staff and representatives from Eden Housing respond to all the comments raised thus far?
Yes, sir. We can go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Can we go ahead and open up Kim Bentler's line?
Yes, I, I, yes, I've been a Vacaville resident here now for eleven years. I retired with the military here. I think we need senior housing tremendously, but I still have problems with the parking and the heights of the buildings. There is nothing, I've driven around the area, there is nothing that's anywhere close to that height. And, and, you know, the last thing they say, oh, it's midpoint will be thirty six feet. Well, that's a lot higher than, that's a midpoint. That's not the tallest point. Every other, the tallest things are church chapels, which is thirty feet. It's not consistent with the stuff. The parking, I've been walking this neighborhood for so long, the parking is such a problem that, you know, when they, when they open up the, if they do the senior, the way it's set up, the driveway for the other place goes through that, which means somebody's going to take any, if there's an extra space, it'll be taken by somebody else. Not just the senior housing stuff there. You know, the one per thing is pretty good if they only do one per, but you're going to have all those two bedrooms, there's going to have a second car guaranteed, almost guaranteed. So, and there's just not the parking available anywhere. So, yes, we need this, but we need, I think we still need to go down to two stories to make it consistent with the rest of the world and keep the parking that you've got there. When you go down to that limit, then you actually have parking for everybody. Because some of your higher end stuff actually has enough parking for everybody. But when we're doing low income housing, we don't, they don't have as many cars supposedly. That's not true. Just, you can just tell in this city where low income housing is just by the parking. And that's kind of the end of my comments. So I'm for stuff, but not really the way this is still designed. And thank you for taking and making, listening to our comments so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, can you go ahead and open up Marion Elkins' line?
Good evening, Council. This is-
Good evening, Council. This is Marion. Quickly, I just want to also thank the council. I, I know they've put in a lot of work at trying to modify this project so that the neighbors are at least, uh, a little more happy than they were in the beginning. The senior housing is needed. I appreciate the modifications to the project, but I'm really concerned to hear that all the one-bedrooms could have three people and all the two-bedrooms could have five people. Because as other people have said, if you have five people in a two-bedroom apartment, you've added at least four cars. You know, I mean, it, three cars maybe, but still. So you're really, really severely increasing the parking, which we thought we had kind of made some gains on. But not if you have that many people in there. And it seems like if only one person has to be, uh, over 55 in a two-bedroom apartment where there are five people allowed, then we've got four other people that could be anywhere, any age. And that's just not supposed to be the intent of the project. I realize that a senior of 56 years of age could be married to a spouse who is 46 years of age. You know, and, and that should certainly be allowed. But I think we need to limit this. I, I, I would like to see something more along the lines of a one-bedroom is considered two people max and a two-bedroom is considered four people max, which, I, I've kind of got misgivings about that. But have some kind of exception for things like we've talked about before, like a grandchild that needs to come and stay because something has happened in the family. Or a caretaker needs to come and stay because, um, you know, the seniors' needs can't be met any other way. So have there be a rule that keeps the numbers down, but there are exceptions allowed? But we can't have just every two-bedroom can have five people and every one-bedroom can have three people. Or we're going to have a disaster. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, appears there's no more public comments, so go ahead and close public comment. Move over to council members and looks like Council Member Sullivan has his hand up.
Yeah, a couple of questions and comments. So my first question is, is actually, did staff need to answer the public comments? I'm sorry, public questions? Did they do that or are we doing that at the very end, very end?
Uh, thank you. This is Aaron. I would suggest that we collect all the council comments and, and provide the council and the, um, the public with answers at that point.
Okay, cool. I just want to make sure you don't miss their questions. So a, a couple of my questions, my, my first question, and, and it might actually drive more questions to spending on the response from staff, is I, I am under the impression there was a split vote on planning. So I'm hoping maybe Aaron, uh, Planning Aaron or City Manager Aaron could kind of fill us in on what the issue was with the split or kind of where the concerns were at. You know, kind of what, uh, what was, what was the Planning Commission, you know, what, what drove that split vote? My, my second, you know, thought, I, I think Mr. PdO, who was our first speaker, you know, and I, I always want to bring this front and center. He started out his statement with, this is just a drop in the bucket. And I, I don't think you can really understate that, that notion. I think we could probably build 15 of these projects and still not have enough housing for seniors. We're severely lacking in this category. We have seniors living in their cars. We have seniors in Vacaville choosing not to buy their medication or insulin because they can't afford to pay their rent and, and pay for their medications. Um, it's, it's, it's a crisis and it's not just Vacaville. It's across the US. It's across California. You know, in my day job, I see this each and every single day. And so the thing I also want to put front of mind is that, um, it's not like folks have better options. So if we don't build this today, it's not like, oh, they're just going to go find some, some different place somewhere else. There are no options. There's literally people sleeping in their cars tonight in Vacaville. There's seniors who are, are not eating tonight in Vacaville and living in possibly a garage or somewhere, uh, that, that is not habitable because we don't have an adequate supply of senior housing. So just kind of prefacing my comments and my mindset from there. Um, I, I think a couple of the other comments, um, you know, the one area that I'm still a little bit worried about is the gas fumes or the toxic fumes from the gas station next door. I know on the project on Cliffside Drive, we talked about filters and closing windows and, or non-closing, or windows that couldn't be opened and additional measures to make sure that toxicity doesn't get in the building. We're going to have folks with COPD, you know, emphysema, lung cancer, bronchitis, all of these different breathing afflictions, uh, in this building. And so how do we make sure we do it right the first time or not, you know, enhancing those afflictions? So I'd like staff to speak to that. I know supposedly we have a clean bill of health from OSHA and the Yolo Solano Clean Air Board and all this other stuff. But can we do a little more? Can we go the extra mile with the design to make sure these folks are extra protected? And I think my closing comment is more to the speakers who voiced some concerns tonight. I think first and foremost, if I lived in your neighborhood, I would have the exact same questions. And I think your fears and concerns and anxieties are totally justified. I, I think, I, I totally understand where you're coming from. I think one of the things that I've been thinking about is that the city, and I'm not saying this is a bad thing, or, or the development community, we haven't done the greatest job, uh, reassuring folks or looping back after projects launch. And so I don't blame folks for being skeptical or worried that, you know, the city and the developer are going to do this plan and then take off and no one's ever going to think about it again. And you're going to be left with a traffic nightmare and seniors warehoused in this apartment complex. Because as a local government, we don't do a great job following up after a project's launch. We don't do a great job checking back in with residents. We don't do a great job checking in with neighbors, uh, you know, three months, six months, a year after the project to see how things go. I think in some cases, we are speculating worst-case scenario, especially with the parking concerns and the occupancy concerns. And I don't doubt people for thinking worst case, but I think that it'll probably be far better than people are, are thinking. However, I'd like to prove it to them. So I guess my question to staff is, could we sort of require, you know, once the building is opened and occupancy starts, maybe a three-month check-in with tenants and a three-month check-in with neighbors? Maybe a six-month parking study, you know, and maybe reconvene some public sessions to really see if what our plans theorize will happen actually comes to fruition? And if it doesn't, make some adjustments. You know, there's things we could do with parking. There's things, we could red curbs, we could no parking sign. We could have the property owner, uh, rent spaces from the adjacent parking lot across the street. We could figure out alternate options after the occupancy piece. If we really find out that the occupancy is terrible and there's five people in these terribly uninhabitable situations, mind you, they probably don't have anywhere where better to go, we could look at maybe talking about occupancy rates after the fact. So I guess my question is, I, I'm very excited about this project. I want to move it forward as quickly as possible. I think we've come a long way. My question is, can we add some sort of follow-up process to check in on the primary concerns of parking and over-occupancy? Uh, meet with the public, meet with the residents and have some sort of public forum post build? You know, and then that we assure the public that we do care, we're going to follow up and we're going to follow through on our promises. So that is, those are my questions and comments. Again, I really like this project. I'm really proud of staff. I'm proud of the developers and proud of the community for coming together on, I, I think this is probably our seventh or eighth meeting talking about this. And I think, uh, it's not perfect, but it's pretty damn good. And I'm, I'm pretty happy with it. And like I said, there's people sleeping in their cars tonight or doubled up in bedrooms or choosing medication or food, uh, over, you know, paying their rent. And this is exactly what we're building this project for and I'm very excited to move it forward.
Uh, Councilmember Wiley?
All right, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. And I also think that this project is vastly improved from the way it was first presented to us. And as people have said, there is a great need for senior housing. I guess I wasn't totally sure before that it was 100% low-income. So I just wanted to confirm that that's what you said, 100% low-income apartments. And I know from housing that we have a lot of people on waiting lists already. So I imagine that those 60 units will be filled before, you know, it ever really opens up much. So my question is, is there a year-to-year lease for these apartments? So people, if you're in the lucky group that get in there first, you're in there until, um, you decide to move on. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and then I wanted to find out a little bit about why the balconies were reduced from 100 square feet to 59 square feet? Because there isn't a lot of space in the apartments. And I just wondered if that was just a cost-saving measure or what was behind that? And then we've talked a lot about, well, what if there's all these people in there? And what if this and that? But, you know, one of the apartment units is for a program manager. And I just wanted to clarify, what is the program manager's job? I mean, would they say there's too many people here or, or not? So those are the, it seems like it wouldn't be abused if there's a project, program manager, you know, living there full-time at the unit. So those were my questions that I had. Um, thanks.
Councilmember Silva?
Um, yes, thanks for the presentation. Thanks for all the folks that called in and continue to be engaged in this particular proposal. I think that, uh, so one question I think that's worthwhile answering and Nolan, uh, Councilmember Sullivan went into it. About what protections exist for over-impaction? Uh, kind of relates to Councilmember Wiley's as well. Uh, also what I, um, I hate to, for those who have different concerns from the neighborhood, I hate to make you do redundant work. Um, but I'm personally requesting that you would, uh, email us, uh, different concerns that you have uh, when projects come up, using this as an example. And this is for the council. The reason why is, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, one thing that we should consider when we meet with, uh, commission is, uh, how do we prepare documents to be something that's much, uh, possibly more accessible, reader-friendly, that's, uh, pertain to the interests of the public? So that way, you know, it, it doesn't, um, give this appearance that, uh, information's trying to be withheld and, and kind of create this distrust. I think, um, the more we can keep that organized and streamlined to address that root cause, um, or what I'm identifying as a root cause, um, uh, I think that would be beneficial. So just kind of putting that out there for the residents to understand what, uh, why I'm requesting that um, as a, as, as a, as a tool. The other, uh, component, um, I, just a clarification on the project. Uh, one of the things, I just want to clarify, there's still an opportunity to have caretakers stay, uh, reside with seniors. I think that's something that, uh, is needed and very unique, uh, particularly with their growing aging population, particularly with their growing aging population with folks with special needs. Um, that's not going to change all the projections. They're showing that, um, certain cases such as related to Alzheimer's, dementia is only going to increase. And there's a huge financial burden with a huge gap, uh, that continues to unfortunately exist, um, from, uh, from a lack of, of financial support to give, uh, those folks the, the care that they, they need and have earned throughout their life to, uh, to be in that state in many situations. Um, the comments about, um, the respective comments around three people, one bedroom. Uh, just want to, you know, personally connect with you all. Uh, that was me, that was my wife, uh, that was my son. Uh, we had nowhere else to go. Um, and I'm grateful that we had a three-bedroom at the time. It was unfortunate, um, that we couldn't fit in even her, uh, her older daughter at the time. Uh, but we didn't want, we're in this weird transition. Um, and, you know, and here I, here I was with a master degree doing research, uh, stem cell-based research, looking at how we can optimize, uh, how, how we can optimize engineered neural stem cells to get to, uh, brain tumors and activate chemotherapy as an innovative way to avoid the drastic impacts of chemotherapy. So, um, not anomaly. There's a lot of people out there doing a lot of wonderful things. And, um, so a lot of times when I'm hearing, uh, concerns about three folks in one bedroom, it's, um, you know, at, at one point, uh, you know, that was me. I know we're talking not about family, we're talking about senior housing here. Um, but a lot of that, uh, can also be connected to a lot of other folks that I've, that I've known and grown up with as well. Um, but that said, I think it is important to under, uh, for residents, um, to understand what, what, going back to my original question, what protections there are for, for, as things kind of come up. Um, but, uh, and on that final note, um, on a final note, uh, you, you know, residents have my full support, that we would, uh, my, my full support to help support anything, uh, that would come up that needs to be addressed, that's, uh, you know, reasonable. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, go ahead and hand it back over to staff to answer the questions from the council members and the constituents.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Roberts. This is Erin Morris, Community Development Director. I'm going to start and then we have Senior Planner Albert Enalt, who's our expert on my team, and then also the applicant may want to add some details to some of the things I'm going to say at a broader level. This is not in any particular order, um, but just one of the first questions I want to respond to is, just to confirm that, yes, this is 100%, um, deed-restricted senior low-income housing with the exception of one manager's unit. Uh, the manager of this apartment complex will live on-site. Um, and they will not be required to be low-income. They may be low-income. But anyway, that's the one exception to that. The second thing is that, um, going, this is a little more of a high level, but state law really limits the cities, actually prohibits the city from putting limits on how many people can live in different bedroom configurations. That's actually true citywide. Uh, but a lot of that gets addressed in the rental agreement between the, um, senior, um, occupant and the company that's running and managing the complex. So I would, I think that Eden can explain to you in a little more detail, as they did at Planning Commission, how that is managed through the agreement and through the onsite manager who has eyes on, um, what's happening in the community. Um, the topic of balconies, um, that actually came with the Planning Commission as well. Uh, there was a reduction in the balcony size and Eden can confirm it. It's probably a cost thing, but they did add more common open space and actually are exceeding our requirements in that area in order to try to balance and provide that open space for the future residents. Um, switching gears a little bit, um, the Planning Commission, it did get a split vote. Um, those that voted against it, um, they, they had different views and different concerns. But we would say that generally, one of the commissioners was very concerned about the past use of the site um, and whether or not staff had properly worked with agencies to make sure it's safe. I do want to note that, as, as described in our staff report, even though a health risk assessment is not required, um, under any laws, uh, we did request that of the developer and they did provide one. And it found that everything on the site is fine and suitable for housing. Uh, the building code, though, does have some fairly stringent requirements for housing that do come into effect, that the city does not need to impose. And if you're interested, Senior Planner Enalt can get into a little more detail on those measures that would be sort of additional protections, um, for the future residents. There was a question about caretakers and yes, um, that is the kind of thing that, um, could be allowed. Um, and Councilmember Silva, I believe that Eden can speak to that, to how they navigate that, um, in their, their senior communities. There's one other topic. I'm trying not to forget anybody here. Just looking at my notes real quick. Um, there's different ways for, um, us to check in with neighbors after projects are built. And I would say one of the, the common ways is that a new apartment complex gets built and usually the Community Development Department will get a call about something that's happening out there. And that does happen, actually for anything that gets built, we will usually get some feedback. So what I can tell you is, you know, my standard approach is to figure out what's going on and really to reach out to the onsite management and have that conversation. Hey, we're getting a complaint about this happening over here. Are you aware of it? What can you do about it? Um, and I've, I've done this a lot in my career. Uh, that tends to be effective, but that's typically how the city gets involved post-construction of these projects. And I think that covered everything, but if it didn't or if you'd like more information specifically on the management of the apartment complex, really as a nonprofit housing, um, housing operator, Eden would be best positioned to go into a little bit more detail if the council's interested.
Councilmember Silva?
I, I think my only outstanding question, Erin, I think you kind of touched on this, is that I, I am, I, I want to know maybe from Albert if there are additional physical measures the developer is taking in the building design to mitigate the gas fumes. The reason I'm stuck on this is because it was a huge part of the, the, um, Cliffside Drive apartments. Again, there were additional filters and vapor barriers and non-closing windows and all this stuff because of the proximity to the Costco gas station. Uh, just looking at the plans, it feels like this particular complex is really close to, or even closer to the gas station, uh, on this, on this corner. Um, and, you know, again, we're putting medically fragile folks in there that have all sorts of respiratory issues. Uh, Albert, are there additional physical measures that we're taking to ensure, uh, you know, to, to maybe even over-cover this particular category?
Yeah, yes, there are. One of the recommendations that, uh, is included as part of this project is to include a, a vapor barrier on the bottom of the project to, uh, help protect any leaking of gas that could happen under the ground. Uh, that's one measure that's going to be implemented as part of the project. Another method that's outright required by the Green Building Code and had been commented on by, uh, the public was the incorporation of MIR 13 filters. And we were able to confirm that that's all already required as a standard measure in the Green Building Code.
Thank you. Um, any other questions from, or Andrea Osigood on there?
Not a question, but I am with Eden if you want me to address some of the questions that came up. I'm happy to.
Yeah, go ahead, Andrea.
Okay, great. Thanks and good evening, um, Council. My name's Andrea Osigood, Senior Vice President of Real Estate for Eden Housing. And first and foremost, I guess I just want to start with, you know, Eden is a longtime nonprofit affordable housing builder and owner. We've been in operation for over 53 years and we really pride ourselves on being a long-term good neighbor. Um, we have never sold a property that we've built. We continue to own the first property we built in Hayward, which happens to be a senior property, and take very good care of that. So I think we're very willing to work with city staff, council and the neighborhood into the future if you choose to approve this project. And once we get City staff, council and the neighborhood into the future if you choose to approve this project and once we get it built. So I wanted to address some of your concerns or the concerns I heard from the community, um. Especially around occupancy maximums. So first and foremost, those are maximums. Those are really what's um. Somebody asked what the maximums were, so we provided that information. That is really a. Legal limit on who can live there, but certainly not what we see in our portfolio. In fact, um, in our senior housing in the survey that we did um just a couple of years ago. Over seventy-seven percent of our senior properties are one-person households. With twenty-two percent uh as two-person households and less than one percent as three-person households and nobody. Was more than a three, a three-person household. Also, for anyone that lives in a unit, they have to be on the lease. So that means that when you move in. All people who are living in the household have to be listed on the lease and. Together, all of those individuals have to income qualify for the unit. So the more people you add. The more likely it is that you would not income qualify for that unit. Um. What else? Let's see. Oh, also, um, in that same survey, we've um looked at how old people in our senior housing developments are. And over seventy percent of our residents are over seventy years old. So definitely serving much higher. Um, uh, aged people. And really the questions that we got, we answered truthfully um around the maximum number of people there, but that is certainly not. The the standard that we see. And yes, technically a child can live. In senior housing, but again, it's very atypical. So just wanted to address that. Um. And then um, I'm sure there's more and I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but I just wanted to make sure that we got all those details. Um, and and answered. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I I wanted to just thank staff and the developer and the community and everybody that contributed toward getting us to where we're at on this project. Um, I I think it just goes to show that with your input, we can make something better and I certainly think this is evidence of that. Uh, the last uh question that I had and then I was gonna motion um to approve, but I see that uh council member Sullivan has his hand up. Um, was there was a discussion about the balconies um shrinking. I just wanted to confirm that that's only on the first floor, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, then that's that's all I have. And then uh, uh, I I was gonna motion, but I'll let uh council member Sullivan speak.
As we're talking, I don't want to steal your thunder. I was gonna toss a motion into. I I I don't mind if you do it by any means, but what I wanted to add to the motion was the requirement of a. Three-month and nine-month check-in with the neighborhood group, the email listserv that's been set up by Albert. So we check in at the three-month mark and host a Zoom call and then check in again at the nine-month mark after occupancy. Uh, with the neighbors and tenants that they'd like to join. To discuss any upcoming issues that have popped up and also allow for council members, particularly Jason or anybody else that wants to attend at that three-month and nine-month mark. So. I I was gonna, like, what I'd like to do is is if you're willing to make that motion, that's exactly what I want to do. So.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, so motion to approve is as stated with the inclusion of a three-month and a nine-month. Uh, Zoom call with an invitation that goes out to the email list serve that Albert has set up. Uh, and an invitation for at least three council members to attend those listening sessions at the three-month and nine-month mark.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion second. Uh, roll call vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor, just to clarify the motion, are we seeing three, six, nine months from this point forward or after the project is constructed?
No, so at, so once the occupancy date sets, we move in the first resident. At the three-month mark after that, we have one Zoom meeting with the the listserv group. And then again, at the nine-month after that first occupant moves in, we have another Zoom meeting. With the listserv group and the community that's on the listserv as well as councils invited to attend and provide feedback and listen.
Okay, if if I could just offer to that, um, Mr. Vice Mayor. So please, council, um, we can certainly, uh, you know, accommodate that request. But I just want the council to be completely uh aware that. In terms of the ability to modify particular things of the project approval. Um, we're we're past that point at this at that stage. Um, if it's about relationship issues in terms of, you know, uh, being good neighbors and things like that, that's that's something that we can work towards. Uh, potentially, but if it's, um, we need more physical improvements or new infrastructure or things like that. That's gonna be a difficult challenge at that stage. So I just want to make sure that the council is fully aware of that.
I I really don't anticipate, what I'm mostly concerned about, Erin, is the good neighbor stuff, like you mentioned, and then parking. Um, and so I know that we can't change the parking plan, but there might be other things the city can do in terms of striping or marking or signage or. Looking at overflow parking locations throughout, you know, that that's more so what I'm thinking. So I I totally understand we can't change any of the major functions, but more so. Just to listen to neighbors to see if there are issues and troubleshoots to the best of our ability.
Fair enough. Thank you. So we do have a motion to second and we'll do the roll call now.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
And we need to read the title of the ordinance. I'll read the title while they get the mayor. Ordinance of ending the municipal code by change of zoning map from neighborhood commercial CN to neighborhood commercial residential. Overlay CN slash RO for the Oak Grove Apartments project located at four seven five West Montevista Avenue. APNs zero one two six dash one five zero dash zero five zero. And zero one two six dash one six zero dash one five zero.
Okay. Uh, we will move to consent calendar. Anyone from the council want to pull anything off consent calendar tonight? I see no hands. Anybody from the public would like to pull anything off the consent calendar tonight? I do see one hand. I don't know if it's for consent. Kim? Are you pulling them? Nope, there, the hand goes down, so we will close. Public comment. And I'll entertain motion.
Sullivan will motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts will second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes. Um, we will move to item eight, business from the floor. This is time to address the council with issues that are not on the agenda. But are within this council's subject matter jurisdiction. And. I see a couple of hands up. We'll start with Edward Russell. Edward, are you there, sir?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, first, I just want to recognize the stolen land that we're on stolen by white Americans. Um, if you hear a young voice in the background, that's just my grandson making sure I stay on point. Um, again, another video has risen of. One of Vacaville's law enforcement shooting a citizen. That's unfortunate again. Um, you know. Often I come on here and I provide solutions. You know, you get the passive aggressive counselors saying, provide solutions, provide solutions. Well, I do. And nothing gets done and no one reaches out for me except for a very limited few. Um. It's it's disheartening as a black man to see that. Folks as a collective unit just like to gab and boxes say that. Uh, the law enforcement is protecting the citizens when they're really not. Not even held accountable. It's even more is absolutely just hypocrisy is that recently the settled agreement from the officer punching. The teenager uh in the settlement and then it just says allegedly punch. The teenager. I mean, you're you're actually questioning our intelligence to have us question what did we see that or did we not? Um, so that that's a problem. So again, I'll offer a new solution. Any law enforcement officer. Crime against a citizen should be fired, terminated on the spot. All benefits revoked. Uh, unenvoy, nothing. This is, this has to stop. Another solution. If you don't already have one. Create an oversight committee for law enforcement officers. Put me on there. Put me on there. Put me on there. I guarantee you, all of these problems that your high control law enforcement officers doing right now will be checked. That's a solution. Get me involved with them. Put me on the oversight committee. Put me on their training. Let me, let me show them how to talk and deal with black folks. There is a solution. Stop walking around and acting like nothing's happening here. These law enforcement officers are out of control. Someone is going to get murdered. Again, I am solutions. Hit me up. Each one of y'all got my email and you got my number. I'm out.
Next caller, Kim?
This one is about parking around the different schools. I happen to live near Vacah High. Vacah High has a park, has a no parking. Stuff. The signs need to get updated to the current school hours. Um, they were all built on the original hours and a lot of the high schools have changed their hours. So the parking, the no parking in the areas need to be. Number one enforced. Number two, the signs need to be changed to reflect the current hours that the schools are going in because yesterday the. I took a picture. The whole street was full. You know, thirty minutes prior to the school getting out. That's not. Uh, permit parking. That's the the police need to enforce it. And we need to stop this stuff because they're, you know, I've got businesses trying to come to my house. They can't park. They can't even come to my house. If it's within an hour of the school getting out. Because of the problem, the people aren't enforcing it and they're, the signs are wrong. So we need to get the signs updated to current schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Minion?
Hi, good evening. Um, I wanted to. To let you know and all of council and and the city attorney know that. Um, I was looking at the uh city's website and I was looking specifically for the um Fair Political Practices Commission, FPPC. Form eight zero six, which pertains to um. It it's basically an agi-agency report of public official appointments. And so earlier in the year, there was several appointments made to non-elected boards, such as someone would be appointed to A-BAG. And A-BAG actually will compensate. Um, those that serve on their board per meeting. I think it's like a hundred dollars, something like that. And there's other. Boards that a council person may serve on where they're compensated. And the FPPC requires that that board. Um, seat and the amount of compensation and the name of the council member be disclosed on the form eight zero six. And in addition, that completed form be posted. On the city website. And the reason why it's important is because. That could, it just informs the public that you may have a potential. Conflict of interest specifically that you earn additional income sitting on another board. And it becomes especially important when you actually vote. To serve on a board for which you're compensated. And so I encourage you to read the requirements of FPPC form eight zero six. And um. In addition, I discovered this requirement because I was looking at. Form four sixty's campaign contributions. And then comparing them to decisions that certain councils, council members have made serving on other boards. And there are, there is a pay-to-play rule and a conflict of interest rule. That basically prohibits campaign contributions. Um, to the extent that poses a conflict. With the decision you make while serving on a non-elected board. And that's why I'm making this comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna close public comment. And we will move to item nine A, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, this first business item before you is a resolution adopting updates to the general fund reserve policy. Ken Metzamir, Director of Finance, has a brief presentation for the council.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the City Manager mentioned, tonight's item is a proposal of updates to the current general fund reserve policy. Next slide, please. So starting with some background history on the current policy, the policy was formally adopted by council on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. This is a time of a lot of fiscal uncertainty coming out of the Great Recession. The city, like every other agency, was dealing with declining revenues. And have been using its reserves since fiscal year two thousand and seven and eight to balance the budget, leaving the reserve at less than ten percent at the time. While the city had a longstanding practice of maintaining general fund reserve fifteen percent, that was never put in writing. Therefore, developing a formal reserve policy was identified as a top priority by the council at the time at a budget stabilization strategy workshop. Uh, the policy was developed based on a review of reserve policies adopted by other cities, recommendations from the National Government Finance Officers Association, best practices in budgeting. Survey results gathered from the North Bay Leve City's group. The primary is, the the primary areas that policy focused on, which I'll go over on the next slide, were establishing an appropriate level of funding to keep in reserve. Criteria that would trigger the use of the reserve and guidelines for using funds in excess of the reserve policy level. Next slide, please. So regarding the reserve level, the policy's goal is to maintain a reserve of two to three months of operating expenses expressed as a percentage. This equates to a sixteen to twenty-five percent reserve. With a target of twenty percent. These reserve funds would be set aside to address potential impacts in the following two areas. Those economic concern T and emergencies. And some examples of economic triggers that would qualify for the use of reserves in these areas. Include unforeseen emergencies such as natural disaster or catastrophic event. And reductions in revenue due to actions by the state or federal government. Or loss of businesses, businesses considered to be significant tax revenue generators. The policy also established guidelines for how general fund reserves above the policy level could be used. So the excess funds could be used to reestablish services or service levels. Staffing and our concessions previously made by employees. It can be transferred to the general fund capital improvement program fund to address capital needs and or deferred maintenance projects for which there were no other funding sources available. Or it can be re-appropriated in the following year's operating budget to provide for one-time non-recurring needs. Um, per the policy, the one item, the general fund access balance, should not be used where it is for new recurring expenses. Next slide, please. So this evening, we are proposing changes to update the policy. Um, the first proposed change is to add the governmental accounting standard board, or GASP's current fund ball. Balance or reserve term terminology. So in government financing, uh, we use funds to account for resources. And the difference between the assets and liabilities in a fund is called fund balance. And in the general fund specifically. Uh, the general fund reserve is part of this fund balance. So after the adoption of the reserve policy in two thousand and eleven, GASP, which is this group that establishes accounting and financial reporting standards for all US government agencies. They issued guidance on classifying fund balance. Um, so they created five categories, which are shown on this slide. And the the intent of that was to help the public identify what portion of the government's fund balance is available to be spent. And the extent to which any restrictions exist. So the five categories are non-spendable. And so this would be fund balance that can't be readily converted to cash. So an example would be a long-term loan that's owed to the general fund. Uh, there's restricted fund balance, which would be the portion of the fund balance that is externally imposed restrictions. And so the most common example here would be the grant funds that. Need to be used for a specific purpose. And then uh for committed fund balance, that would be resources subject to limitations that the cities impose on itself. So an example would be revenues that uh the city council is restricted through city ordinance. There's the assigned fund balance, which would be resources that the city council or designee has stated um an intended use for. Some example would be funding that's. Designated for a specific measure and project or initiative. And then the last uh category is the assigned, assigned, unassigned fund balance, which is the portion of the fund balance that's not currently designated for any purpose. And so you'll notice the last three categories are highlighted and and that's because that's the portion of the fund balance the council can budget, spend or reserve without external restriction. And the city's been required to report these fund balance categories in our annual financial reports for years, which is what we do. And our current um external financial auditors, they recommended these categories be implemented into the reserve policy just for consist for consistency purposes. So additionally, adding these categories will help in clearly defining the general fund reserve. So currently, when the general fund reserve is presented to council and budget updates. We always talk about two reserves. And so we talk about the budget reserve, which is the portion of the general fund reserve, not including measure M. Then we talk about a combined reserve, which is the big, the budget reserve plus measure M. So after this policy update, um, the general fund, we would define it and present it in one way. It would be the unassigned fund balance, which is the general fund resource. Including measure M that has not been committed or assigned by council. And this will be even more important as we approach the next year's budget adoption process, because staff will be proposing options on further addressing the city's unfunded liabilities and. Knowing how we define the general fund reserve is an important step in properly planning for that. Next slide, please. In addition to implementing the fund balance terminology, staff is also recommending the following proposed changes to the policy. And so you'll see the current policy on the left and proposed changes on the right. So regarding how often the reserve level should be reviewed for appropriateness. The current policy states that it would be, it would occur every two years. Uh, the proposal here is to change that to an annual review as part of the budget. The proposal here is to change that to an annual review as part of the budget adoption process. Regarding the use of reserves, the current policy states that if the reserve falls below 15%, the city council may restore over a multi-year period. So the proposed change here is to increase the reserve level trigger to 16% so that it's in line with that lower range of the reserve goal of having at least two months of reserves. And then specifying a one- to three-year period to restore funds back to policy level. The final proposed update would be to expand the list of potential uses when excess reserves exists to include transfers to the city's internal service funds. And this would be used to build or replenish reserves for general liability and workers' compensation claims, vehicle equipment, technology replacement, and also for retiree benefit payouts. It could also be used for paying down debt quicker to save on interest costs. And then the final proposed change here to add to the list is to, the ability to make additional payments towards the city's unfunded liabilities and/or contributions towards a pension or OPEB trust. Next slide, please. So the recommendation for tonight's item is to adopt the subject resolution approving the proposed updates to the policy. Next slide, please. And that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to open up public comment. I see no hands for public comment. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to Councilmember Wiley, please.
Thank you for this information. I do have a question on your unassigned fund balance. If we change it so that it includes measure M not separated? So then when you show the, the bar graphs, you wouldn't have that separate little measure M at the top, is that correct? You're, and I want to know what, what's the advantage of not separating it out? And then since you can't spend things for ongoing that are date certain, since there is an end possible for measure M, will that affect spending?
Sure. So for the first question, when we're talking about revenues and expenses, so measure M is its own fund in our accounting system. And so we would still be tracking expenses and revenues related to measure M. It's still going to be something that gets budgeted for and kind of itemized separately in the budget book. What's going to change would be, I think, the second to last slide. So after we go over revenues and expenses, we talk about reserve levels. And then we always show this chart that shows where the budget reserve, it goes down over time, whereas measure M goes up over time. And so I think the advantage of kind of having one single reserve is that, I think it takes away the confusion where if, let's say, worst-case scenario, something were to happen to the city. As staff, I think as council, it'd be good to know sort of what do we consider the reserve? And what could we use for emergencies and kind of knowing what that single reserve amount would be? And so I would say that's kind of the advantage. Instead of having these two kind of different reserves that you're showing, you are defining it as just one single one. And then I think your second, can you repeat your second question?
Well, because you say that, you know, you can't spend things for ongoing cost if, if they're only there for a short time. You know, measure M has an ending date. And so I just wondered if that would affect decisions about spending things based on the reserve if some of it is, is not ongoing money because we're not guaranteed that it will be ongoing?
Sure. So like in the case of measure M, it expires in 2038. So it is kind of further down the road for when that would potentially come up. And then as far as spending it for ongoing costs, so with the excess reserve right, right now, when we looked at our reserve, the last time we did a budget update, we were looking at a reserve of about 50%. And so to use that reserve, we wouldn't kind of plan to use that for, let's say, hiring additional staff because that would be a new recurring expense. I mean, what you would try to do is any sort of staffing, try to capture that amount of reserve, no, sorry, the amount of revenue that you're going to be bringing in the upcoming year, whether that be the general fund or measure M. But we wouldn't use the excess reserve for staffing because it's ongoing cost. You would want to use that for more one-time type of project stuff. And then any sort of staff increases or things that are more recurring, that is going to be where you're going to want to fit that with what you're projecting in revenues for the upcoming years.
All right. So that, I just didn't know if that would cause a problem with measure M being, you know, in one reporting for that. So thank you. I think that's clear, more clear. And you said it doesn't, it goes until 2038?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah, I think I have very similar concerns to what Councilmember Wiley was just talking about. You know, prior to measure M starting to come to fruition and bring some money to the general fund, we, we had a pretty sizable structural deficit. And so my concern is by adding measure M into the general fund and sort of mixing the two or intermingling the two together, we sort of cover up this systemic issue that, that we had, that we've sort of fixed, I think. And, you know, it, we had a surplus this year, which is great. But I do worry, I mean, 2038 sounds like a long time, but 16 years in government land is not, is not a long time. And so for me, I have a little heartburn about putting measure, and I've brought this up just about every general fund discussion we have, about putting measure M and kind of lumping the two together and not clearly delineating the difference. I think we have 16 years to essentially grow revenues by eight to 10 million to support some of the ongoing costs we have. And if we're not really focused and intentional on that over the next 16 years, we're, we're going to hit a pretty significant cliff. And so I guess, I mean, most of the recommendations were fine tonight, but I really don't feel like we maybe strongly addressed sort of that, that revenue growth or really an intentional plan to deal with measure M if voters, you know, aren't feeling too great about us in, in 16 years. And so for me, I, I'm not super comfortable mixing the two until we have kind of a firm plan to rebuild that revenue process or that, that lost revenue if measure M goes over a 16-year period of time. And so Ken, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that or maybe I'm missing something or maybe I'm being Chicken Little, but that, that does worry me. Again, going from a structural deficit of several million a few years ago to flush right now because of measure M, but, but not thinking about 16 years down the road makes me a little worried. Do you have any thoughts on that, Ken, or am I missing something?
I, I do. So I think if we were just to kind of like concentrate over the last three years since the measure M was extended, we're looking at, let's say, measure M didn't exist. And we're looking at our revenues and expenses basically being within like 1% of each other. I want to say in 19, our revenues are about a million dollars better than expenses if measure M didn't exist. In 20, I think we were about $500,000 in the hole. And then this most recent year, we were about, you know, a million to $2 million to the good. And so that's kind of been where we're at. We're usually 1% to 2% either way. That's kind of the swing there. I'd say like the focus of this evening is really the reserve. And going back to like worst-case scenario, if something were to happen to the city, I guess what would, would measure M be totally off the books as far as dealing with any, with a catastrophic event or an emergency? If council or the majority of council feels that measure M shouldn't be used to address any sort of emergency, even if it's one that would prompt service cuts, then I'd say you wouldn't want to include measure M. But if an emergency were to come up, if measure M would be something that could potentially use to kind of bridge the gap over a short-term period, then I think it makes sense for that to be part of sort of the reserve, this 15 to 20, the 16 to 25% range that we're talking about. And then as far as kind of the fiscal sustainability going forward, one of the things that will come up with, let's say, with, with measure M as well and what we'll be talking about as far as the budget adoption is with our unfunded liabilities, we have the ability to save millions of dollars by paying more on that unfunded liability a lot sooner than just making the minimum payments. Now, if we were to go with the approach of we're going to exclude measure M, it's not to be used for that purpose, then kind of going back to our revenues and expenses, we only exceed our expenses by a million dollars. That would pretty much be all we would be able to put towards this unfunded liability if the council chose to use in that direction. Now, if measure M was on the table and we could structure a plan to use some of that to pay the unfunded liabilities quicker, we have the potential to save taxpayers millions of dollars over the future. And that would be something that would reduce our costs going forward and would benefit the city whether measure M was extended or not. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Yeah, that is very helpful. I think, I think I'm less concerned probably about what we're spending. I mean, I'm concerned about it, but the measure M piece down, I would be very supportive if a disaster came up and I like the fact that we're repaying OPEB and I think we're doing some great stuff. I guess what'd make me feel a little better is if we had, there's, you know, not a lot of urgency to this because it's 2038. But, you know, just a future analysis, you know, by you or your staff at some point in time where we can really talk about worst-case scenario, what if voters don't, don't renew measure M in 2038? How, you know, and, and, you know, like you're saying, we're going to prepay all these different things which will reduce costs and maybe we won't need it. But for me, what would be helpful is kind of a 2038 worst-case scenario plan and what we can do over the next 16 years to be prepared for that. I think, you know, again, we, we have the gift of time right now to prepare for the worst. And honestly, if we prepare for the worst and then voters vote in measure M again, heck, we're, we're in great shape, right? So, so I guess I, I'm sort of content with everything you're saying tonight. The spending issues don't bug me, but I would like to see some sort of long-term, like 15-year plan on, you know, again, decreasing expenditures and increasing revenues to a point where if measure M disappeared in 2038, we'd be in good shape. And so I, I know it's, you don't have a crystal ball for that, but I, you know, that would make me feel a lot better and, and my kids feel a lot better as they'll be inheriting this, this city by that point in time in that, in that issue. So, so maybe, is that something we could work on over the next year or two?
Sure. That's something I could take a shot at.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would like to jump in. I usually wait for last, but I just want to piggyback off Councilmember Sullivan. I completely agree with him. The voters voted measure M in, to go into our general fund. That was, the people spoke and they wanted it in the general fund. However, this council spoke many years ago and said, we want to make sure that we keep those two funds, you know, although it's all still in the general fund, we want to make sure we can keep an eye on measure M. Because there was things that measure M were passed for, even though it was going into the general fund, but there was things that the city, citizens wanted to see. And we want to make sure that we're still using that for that. So I completely agree with Councilmember Sullivan. And I think we need to keep the eye on the prize. But of course, any emergency comes up, it's still the general fund. So with that, I'm going to go to Councilmember Silva, I believe, is next.
I thank you. Ken, just, I think, are there any, is there a, would be really helpful for me is if we had some type of graphs to do this comparison between what we have and what's being suggested. Is there any way, would that be too hard to, to actually develop?
Are we just talking about the changes to the policy or?
Well, yeah, I mean, all these discussions, like I'm, I'm hearing the words, I'm seeing the writing, but like for me, I'm, you know, and maybe it's my own limitation. I'm, I'm a very visual person and so, or talking about graphs and how it's represented. And certain comments were made that, and this is what prompted me to make this comments. But, you know, if we're concerned about the appearance of certain graphs, if I interpret that right, I'm kind of, I'm curious to see what, what they, what did before and after graphs would suggest that would eliminate confusion based on the different terminology that we're talking about adjusting.
Sure. So I don't have the graphs this evening. I could put something together and send it afterwards. The graph I'm referring to is that when we do the quarterly budget updates, we, there's the five-year forecast that we go over. And it talks about the, the revenues and expenses for the general fund. If you were to, and it also breaks out measure M as part of that. So none of that changes as far as the revenues and expenses go. And even in the budget document, we have a page on measure M, the amount, the amount of money that we're bringing in and what it's being spent on. So none of that's going to change. What's going to change is that at the very last, I guess, meaningful slide of those budget updates, when we're talking about the reserve, we show a graph that says the combined reserve is pretty much going to stay around 50% over the five-year forecast. But then we break that out further and say budget reserve, you know, is 30%. It goes down to 17% in five years. Measure M continues to go up. And so what would change is that we're basically defining the reserve as just one number. And so when I present that, the, what you're going to see is not this budget reserve is this amount, combined reserve is, is that amount. You're going to see one, one reserve. That, that's the only thing that's going to be shown in that particular slide. Revenues and expenses for measure M, you're going to see how much we're spending, how much we're bringing in. And when we're talking about the reserve and how much we're above it, the way that we're defining it in this policy is that it's that unassigned fund balance. It's the amount of the, the general fund, including measure M, the council is not already budgeted for or given direction on how to spend. It's, it's, it's the part of the, the general fund balance that has no current designation. It hasn't been assigned to anything.
I don't know. I guess right now, I'm just feeling like I'd like, I still like to see that. I understand what you're saying. So I would still like that data to be presented to us. So I guess I'm having a hard time not, when you're talking about the reserve and breakdown of the reserve. But, one more, sorry. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Richie?
Thank you so much. Well, first of all, I like to thank, you know, and really just give praise to the whole staff and with Ken and everyone down the city for all the hard work to get this project. And it's, doing a proposal on a budget and you do the data, it's a lot of hard work. So I want to give us, just really publicly say thanks for all the stuff you guys do behind the scenes to bring this to us and make it, make us look so simple and make decisions. I hate the reason we're piggyback, but I want to piggyback off what Nolan and, and the mayor said. This measure M is before my time, but now we are entrusted to make sure that we do the right thing with it. And, and I want to make sure that we, we honor the wishes of the public. But one of the things that Ken, you know, I think was missed a little bit of what Nolan said is, you know, the, the worry about growth and ability for it to be feasible to go forward. We had an amazing presentation by yourself, Mayor, and City Manager, the state of the city. You guys brought a lot of things that I really wish that the whole city back where it goes and watches. We're not a stagnant city. We're, we're not a dying, kind of a dying city. We're growing and we're prospering and we're building a lot to thrive. The growth factor is coming. We're bringing amazing jobs to the community. So we're going to create revenue streams that will help us and assist us, keep backwards going right direction, help our fundamentals and the finances go the right direction. With the addition, when we have good years that we've had, we want to be able to form a second kind of OPEB trust to help pay down that public, that pension debt. It's going to help us with the life of the loan. And we already have one OPEB trust to form a second one. It's, it's going to allow us in the good times to pay down our debts. So therefore, overall, we're better. I mean, I think we have a strategic plan coming up. We're really going to address the vision of Vaccaville. And really, you know, growth is, is going to be so important to make sure that we create revenue, to have the system that kind of function effectively. So, you know, I don't want to get bogged down in cost expenses and worth of money. We need to keep, make sure that we in the right direction. We grow the city of Vaccaville. We put money where it should be on biotech or amazing educator teachers like Councilman Silva to ensure we have the next generation of people that live in Vacca, working in Vaccaville and create amazing growth. That will have the, this hotel tax. We, we need to make sure that we create revenue for the city to be prosperous. And with the guidance of the staff, we'll make sure we have good years, we pay down the debt faster. I think it's going to work out. But I appreciate the fact that I want to honor the goals and have a general fund, the measure M, and make sure we have good times, pay down the debt faster. But let's not lose a sight that we need to make sure we do the right job to bring good jobs and industries in Vaccaville and keep growth up.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, do it. A motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Stockton, I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Richie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rulick?
Yes.
Item 9B, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, this next business item is the 2021 Annual Status Report and General Plan Practice Report. Senior Planner Tyra Hayes has a presentation for the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tyra Hayes. I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department. As the city manager noted, we will be reviewing the 2021 Annual Stats Report, the general plan tonight. Next slide, please. So first, I thought we would take a moment to let everyone know if they're not aware. Everything the city does is determined by our general plan. And our general plan has a vision statement, which in the grand scheme of things, promotes the creation and the ongoing maintenance of a great community in which to live, work, and play. The general plan also guides all the city's actions in order to support that goal through the year 2035. There's a whole list of other goals that are included in the introduction chapter of the general plan that go to support the greater vision. And some of those goals include preserving the small-town feel of Vaccaville, fostering community-oriented neighborhoods, strengthening Vaccaville's downtown culture, protecting nature and scenic features, and providing a safe environment. As I previously mentioned, the entire list can be read in the introduction chapter of the general plan itself. Next slide, please. So one way that the city ensures that all of its actions are consistent with the general plan, its vision statement, its policies, its goals, and its actions is to prepare an annual report that lets the council know how we've been doing the past year and what we are proposing to do and to make a priority for the following year. and what we are proposing to do and to make a priority for the following year. The report in its totality reports on all the city's general plan actions, all the measures identified in the city's energy conservation action strategy. That is a document that is aimed at reducing greenhouse gases consistent with state law. It addresses the mitigation measures that are identified in the general plan environmental impact report. And lastly, it provides a lot of information pertaining to the various housing programs and how the city is doing towards meeting its fair share of the regional housing needs allocation. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we do like to report to the council what has been completed in the year prior. This slide should be reading uh priority implementation tasks that were identified in twenty twenty-one and that have been completed. Those main tasks that have been completed, including adopting the vehicular miles traveled or V M T thresholds, along with the SEQA clearance document that does allow all existing development consistent with our general plan land use designations to move forward without the need for additional V M T analysis. We also completed the update to our energy and conservation action strategy. We completed the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We very recently completed the Downtown Specific Plan. And lastly, we recently completed the Land Use Development Code update. Next slide, please. So moving forward and looking towards the remainder of this year, staff is recommending the following tasks as priority projects. The city needs to amend some of the infrastructure and facility plans to reflect changes that have been made over the past year. We are nearing the completion of our Assembly Bill sixteen hundred Development Impact Fee Study. We will begin implementation of the Downtown Specific Plan and its implementation measures. We hope to complete the Municipal Service Review. That is a state mandated document that must be adopted every five years, and the last one we adopted was in twenty seventeen, therefore it is due. We hope to complete the Urban Reserve Inventory, which is required by one of our ordinances to be conducted concurrently with the new Municipal Service Review. The purpose of that inventory is to evaluate whether or not the city is maintaining a twenty-year supply of land for uh to meet our housing needs. We hope to complete our housing strategy and our housing element update. And lastly, we will be implement implementing our E C A S measures. Next slide, please. So we're mainly going to be focusing on the Housing Element Report tonight. Um I should have noted earlier in our presentation that the state requires that the city prepare the annual status of the general plan report, which includes a housing element annual progress report on an annual basis. It must be submitted by April first of each year in order to in order for the city to main or remain eligible for various grant funding opportunities. And the main reason the state requires this is they want to ensure that these documents don't become stale. They want to ensure that we are actively using our documents. We consider any necessary implement or improvements to the implementation of these documents and to allow for any course corrections as necessary. So going to the housing element, the Housing Element Annual Progress Report is a mandatory, or I'm sorry, the housing element itself is a mandatory general plan element. It differs from the general plan in terms of it must be eight updated every eight years. Um it has very specific requirement as identified in state housing element law. The existing housing element has a reporting period that extends from twenty fifteen through the end of twenty twenty-two. Beginning in January of twenty twenty-three, we will be transitioning to our new housing element, which will cover the next eight years. The policies identified in our housing element are intended to address all income groups. The report itself does contain standardized forms, and you do have all these forms within your staff report. And as I mentioned, it is imperative that we submit this report on an annual basis to maintain our eligibility for planning grants as well as larger grants for our capital improvement um projects. Next slide, please. So again, I want to remind everyone that everything we are reporting on tonight is in relation to our existing housing element, which will expire at the end of the year. Our existing R E N A number, and R E N A stands for Regional Housing Needs Allocation, is just under eleven hundred units. Those eleven hundred units are broken up based on income groups. The next slide will break down what those income groups actually mean. And to kind of simplify what the R E N A is, it is the number of housing units that have been determined to be the city of Vacaville's Vacaville's fair share of housing during this housing element reporting period. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, our existing R E N A is um identified by various income groups. The income groups are all based on a certain percentage of the Solano Care County area median income. In twenty twenty-one, the Solano County area median income for a family of four was just under a hundred thousand dollars. The other income groups are broken down by a a family of four making fif- up to fifty percent of the A M I area median income is determined to be a very low-income household. Household making eighty percent of the A M I is a low-income household. Moderate incomes make up to a hundred and twenty percent of the A M I. And anything above a hundred and twenty percent of the A M I is determined to be an above moderate income household. Next slide, please. So looking at Solano County as a whole, last year in twenty twenty-one, the median income for a family of four, as previously mentioned, was just under a hundred thousand dollars. The median sales price countywide was just under five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The maximum affordable sales price for a moderate income household, and once again, that is a household that makes a hundred and twenty percent of the A M I, or in this case, just under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They can afford a maximum sales price of just under five hundred thousand dollars. And a low-income household that makes less than eighty percent of the A M I can only afford a household not exceeding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Here we have a chart that shows a comparison of Vacaville in comparison to the other Solano County municipalities. You might notice that all of the municipalities, the median sales in or sales price of new homes was only affordable to above moderate income households, with the exception of Rio Vista, which has homes affordable to a moderate income household. But it should be noted that Rio Vista has a very large population of income-dead restricted units. Next slide, please. This chart is very similar to the last one we just reviewed, except this time we're looking at rental units. So the median rent countywide last year for a three-bedroom unit was just over twenty-three hundred dollars. A two-bedroom unit was just over sixteen hundred dollars, uh sixteen hundred dollars. The maximum affordable rent for that moderate income household making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year was just over twenty-eight hundred dollars. A low-income household can only afford a maximum rent of eighteen hundred dollars. Here we do show that some of the rental units, actually quite a bit of the rental units within Solano County, were afforded affordable to moderate income households, with the only exceptions being for Dixon and Fairfield, in which the apartments were only affordable to the above moderate income households. Next slide, please. So as previously mentioned, the Housing Element Annual Progress Report consists of several standardized forms. Um just to summarize some of these forms, I provide the information for you here. The first table talks about the newly submitted residential development applications. We did receive three. They include the Elmo Creek subdivision, which consists of a hundred and thirty-one single-family units. The Allison Apartments, which consists of a hundred and thirty-five multifamily units. Um it should be noted that these um apartments are currently under construction and they are located on um Allison Drive and um Harbison. And lastly, we have an application in from McMurtry Estates consisting of twenty-four single-family units in the Rice McMurtry area located at the northwest corner of the city of Vacaville. Next slide, please. Table A two um includes a lot of information regarding the number of permits that were issued and their location. In twenty twenty-one, our active communities that were pulling residential permits included Brighton Landing, North Village, Vanden Estates, Farmstead, Parkside Green, Ashton Place and the Harbison Townhomes. As previously mentioned, the median citywide sales price was five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And the city's median rent was just under twenty-eight hundred dollars. Next slide, please. So Table B has been corrected since it was published in the staff report. And Table B addresses the number of residential permits issued by affordability during the year twenty twenty-one. So in twenty twenty-one, we issued twenty-seven um residential permits affordable to very low-income households. This is in relation to the Pony Express Senior Apartments located on the corner of Elmira and Aegean Way. We issued an additional thirty-three units for Pony Express Apartments look uh affordable to low-income households. We issued ten accessory dwelling unit permits, which we believe are um affordable to low-income households, assuming that they are being rented to family members. And lastly, the vast majority of the total residential permits issued in twenty twenty-one were affordable to those households with an above moderate income. Next slide, please. So there were some additional um tables that were not applicable to the city of Vacaville during the um twenty twenty-one reporting year, only because we had no activity to report. And those include the tables you see on your screen. They are Table C, talking about sites that were identified or reserved to accommodate our shortfall in our housing need in order to meet our R E N A numbers. Table D is a program implementation status pursuant to a certain section of the government code. Table E, any commercial development applications that included a density bonus. And Table G, locally owned lands included in the housing element site inventory that have been sold, leased or otherwise disposed of. Again, no activities um took place during the year twenty twenty-one to include in these tables. Next slide, please. So Table F, Table F talks about the number of units that have been rehabilitated, preserved and acquired for alternative adequate sites. So during twenty twenty-one, the city was able to preserve a number of at-risk units, and those units were located within the Leaking Corner Apartments, as well as the Vacaville Meadows Apartments. Next slide, please. Table H talks about locally owned surplus sites declared surplus. Last year, we declared two sites to be surplus sites, and that includes ninety-one Town Square consisting of just over half an acre. It should be noted that this is the actual city's Town Square. And the other location is seventy-fifty Leisure Town Road. And I do believe this is the parcel that we originally had anticipated constructing a new fire station on. Next slide, please. So before going over this table, um I should note that in addition to preparing the city's Housing Element Annual Progress Report, the city is also required to submit a successor agency report as an addendum to the Housing Element Annual Report. This report um provides status updates on the city's affordable housing activities. So that report, as well as everything discussed tonight, has been included in the city council's um staff report. So in addition to providing the reports that must be submitted to the state by the April first deadline, the city does have a general plan policy that requires us to annually monitor our housing mix in terms of how many single-family homes we have in comparison to multifamily homes. Um I should I should reword that. This is all based on the permits that have been issued annually. So here we do account for our current housing mix going back to the year twenty ten. And right now, we are sitting at the city being composed of just over seventy-eight percent single-family homes and twenty-two percent multifamily homes. These numbers are close to the general plan policy that um directs us to strive to maintain a housing mix of approximately seventy-five percent single-family and twenty-five percent multifamily. So this is something that the city council should be aware of moving forward through the year twenty-two, as we are asked to review various housing development applications. Next slide, please. So that was a very quick review of the very lengthy report that has been provided for the city council's information. If the city council is um pleased with this report, this report will be sent to the two states city or the two state offices before the April first deadline to ensure we maintain our eligibility for various grant funding opportunities. With that, I would like to open this up to anyone who may have questions or comments about tonight's presentation and or the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open it up public comment. I see no hands going up for public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the council, and I'll start with Councilmember Sullivan.
Yeah, I I have a lot of of comments and thoughts here, um and I'm going to try not to drone on and on, but um I I have quite quite a few um things I want to get off my my mind here. Um so so Tyra, great presentation. Uh the general plan is is extremely hard to really kind of comprehend and grasp. It's and kind of figure out exactly what it's trying to tell us. I think you did a really good job condensing that down, and I think you have the impossible job of figuring out how to create a housing mix in Vacaville that 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 works with all of the different variables and problems we have uh in the state of California and cost of construction and cost of land and just the the middle of a housing crisis. So I just I really appreciate um everything that you do and 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 all of the work that goes into this process. Um I, you know, I've been on council now for about three years, and I feel like there's a there's a lot of instances where it feels like um the general plan says one thing and we sort of end up getting something else, or or maybe we forget things or omit things or things don't actually kind of come to fruition the the way they should be. Um or it seems like sometimes we we ask questions like, uh why why do we do this this way? Or why do we do that? And the general plan is often used as sort of the the reason that we we don't do certain things or that we do do certain things. So, you know, looking at the made the general plan page here, you know, the starting vision statement is um through the year twenty thirty-five, the city of Vacaville will continue to preserve and enhance qualities to make it a great community in which to live, work and play, drawing on its many strengths, the city will grow in a manner that provides high quality of life for all current and future residents. And the reason I I accentuated current is I think we have a a massive housing crisis, right? So no one in Vacaville can afford housing. And slide nine or ten, you pretty clearly showed that the housing that we're building is not affordable to the bulk of Vacaville residents. Um that how do we adjust that in the plan? I mean, it sounds like we just sort of acknowledge that and kind of skim over and keep on moving. Uh one of my questions that I wanted to ask, and maybe you can give me an answer on this quickly, and I'll keep going, is do we actually have a median square footage number? So one of the the concerns I have is we build big and big is expensive and big is costly for sales price. Do we track the median square footage of the housing that we're building uh like we track prices and other things?
In terms of square footage, I just happened to look that up today. Um in the past year, the median square footage for a single-family home was just under twenty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, so that's huge. It's a massive, massive home, right? So, you know, I think part of this is how do we use things like square footage to start? What if we had a smaller target, right? What if the square footage target was we want a median of fourteen hundred, or we want a median of, you know, people can't afford monster homes in Vacaville. What happens is we build these housing tracks, you know, uh in in various parts of town that are great, and a very select few Vacaville residents can afford to buy them. Mostly what we're seeing is folks from the Bay Area cash out their Bay Area home, move to Vacaville, crowd out the locals and and drive the housing market up. And so again, it feels like the general plan is misdirected. It feels like it's pointing us one direction, but we want to go a slightly different direction. So I I'm asking kind of a vague comment, I guess, type, but how do we sort of re point the plan to actually build the housing that that we're kind of looking for? Um I have a whole host of other comments. Aaron, you just came off mute, so maybe you have something to say to that. Aaron, do you want to jump in and I'll I'll keep asking my comments after that?
Uh if that's okay, um Councilmember Sullivan and council, I just want to say that that I hear the interest and I from you and from others in this community at looking at how the city can encourage smaller homes, you know, homes that would be more affordable by design, less square footage, more like that starter home for the typical Vacaville resident. I guess in my professional opinion, the general plan is fine. It's really maybe some additional housing policies or efforts. I I want to remind the council that that's actually one of the biggest focuses of our housing strategy. And also our current housing element update is looking at what policies are necessary to achieve that, if the council unifies around that vision. And then a concurrent effort, I'm just going to put this out here, it really is a significant effort right now, is the um update to the city's Development Impact Fee Study and looking at how the city might incentivize developers to produce smaller units by reducing the fee burden on those smaller units. So I want to put those two things out there. Um I sense you're on a roll and have other comments to make, but if you want response from staff, you know, Tyra and I are are available to keep doing that.
Oh, I I love that. Actually, you touched on one of my questions. So how does the housing element um or this housing strategy, how does that how does that interplay with the general plan? Like, how do they? Like, how do they work together? How do they coordinate? Like, how does that, can you explain that a little bit?
Of course. Yeah, the housing element has to be consistent with the general plan. And the general plan is this twenty-year document that of course will get amended from time to time as need be. But the unique thing about the housing element is the state requires we update every eight years. And as part of that update, we are tasked with looking at each and every policy in the current housing element, whether or not they've been effective, so what results have been accomplished as a result of each policy. And then we basically put together whether we're going to continue with that policy, modify that policy, and are there new policies we need to add to our housing element to address the needs of the community? So really, the housing element can be mistaken as a very, kind of, it can be a very boring seeming, dry sort of paper exercise to appease the state. But if we do it in a meaningful way, it does provide that opportunity to really get into what kind of housing policies do we need over the next eight-year housing cycle?
Awesome. Okay, okay, that's very helpful. So that brings a couple other points. So I feel like, you know, this is sort of the report card, right? This is like our general file report card, and we're kind of reviewing it and submitting it to the state. You know, I feel like in a lot of places, the staff are definitely getting A's and doing a wonderful job. There's two key points, and I tried to find it in the document, Tyra and Erin, but the report is dense. It's, so two key points that we call out specifically in the vision statement. The first is, sorry, let me find this here, it's the parks one. One is encourage and support high-quality schools. And the second, it has something to do with parks. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it. Anyway, so there's a parks call out and there's a high-quality schools call out. I think honestly, in those categories, with the schools piece, we don't have a whole lot of latitude or tools. But honestly, we're getting like, we're getting a failing grade there, I think. You know, it's a huge issue for residents and newer developments. How do we shine a little extra light on areas where the council maybe feels like we're deficient in the general plan? And on the parks piece, we've done a needs assessment through Parks and Recreation. I'm not sure if we're still using one that's four or five years old. But in every category, whether it's sports fields or basketball courts or pickleball or whatever, we are not meeting almost any of our city stated standards. So we say we should have X amount of acreage of parks. We say we should have X amount of basketball courts. We say we should have all these things across the board. We're failing all of those standards as a city. How do we shine a little light or a little emphasis or a little more oomph on parks and schools through this process, through this report?
This is Erin Morris again. From a community development perspective, and the city manager, others may have other perspectives because I don't work in the role of parks directly necessarily. Some of these issues will surface in the update to our housing element and also the environmental justice element that we're embarking on. Which is basically a technical update to the general plan, because it'll touch many chapters of the general plan. But really, from a community development perspective, how we try to achieve better for our community is with when new projects are coming forward, we're trying to get the very best projects and the very best amenities with those projects so that they knit into this community and are assets to the community. And that comes with the kind of parks developers bring, it comes with the sidewalks they build that connect parks to people, existing neighborhoods to new neighborhoods, all that private development stuff that helps knit new development into the community.
If we wanted to have a deeper dive on this topic, particularly maybe a Quimby ordinance, how would we do that?
I would defer to the city manager on this one because it is a more of a parks department and city management issue.
Okay.
So this is Erin, I can jump in. So thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. So with regards to parks and some of the challenges that we've been facing with, you know, upgrading our park system, as Ms. Morris mentioned. In terms of new development, I think we're exploring new ways and new mechanisms to help ourselves be more proactive with the methodology for bringing, you know, high-quality park standards to our newer communities. We've been challenged admittedly, you know, over the past with a outdated development impact fee, for one. And so I think with, you know, the forthcoming update on that, that that will help us bring additional revenues into our funds to be able to bring new park amenities to existing neighborhoods and then in future neighborhoods. We also have the future upcoming conversation about the use of Measure M funds for some of our park facilities. So I would suggest that, you know, in terms of the bigger picture, when we come back to council with our AB sixteen-hundred update, as well as with the future conversation and the three-by-three group that we're putting together for the Measure M conversation, that we can have a bigger conversation about how we continue to reinvest or add more investments to our park programs throughout the city.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I really would like to explore that further conversation, you know, schools and parks combined. You know, maybe have some Quimby stuff brought back to council. I just, we've all been talking about it, and it just feels like an area that we need to kind of dial in a little bit. Three or four last comments and I'll shut up. I'm sorry, guys. So my last couple comments is I would like to incorporate somewhere in the process, in the plan, in the principles, in the vision. And I'm not sure how we do that, city manager or Erin or Tyra, but one of the key principles that I feel like is starting to come through loud and clear from council that I think should be somehow cauterized in the general plan or cauterized in the process is the first is there is a few of us that are really concerned about the over-concentration of low-income, high-density housing in a select few neighborhoods. And so what the city has done historically because of redevelopment and free land and a few other things is we've sort of created these super-high-density, super-high-low-income neighborhoods. I personally feel very strongly that every district should pull their share and pull their weight and should have an equal dispersment of rental housing, an equal dispersment of low-income, an equal dispersment of high-density. And that just doesn't happen today. And so I would love to have a discussion somewhere. I don't know where we open that or cauterize that or add that to the general plan. But I think that's a very important principle, and we're starting to hear that more and more from various council members. So that's point one, where would we include that in the process? And I've got a couple more, and then I'll stop. Point two is that whenever we build a plan that includes high-density or low-income housing projects, particularly east of Leisure Town, what appears to happen is the houses are built first. The high-density or the apartments of the low-income is always built last. So what happens is you have all these homes built, and then the developer goes out and says, oh yeah, we're going to build these apartments here. And people lose their minds and come down to the city council chambers with pitchforks and demand that we pull that out of the plan. And it's sort of a trick. It's, they know that's going to happen, they know it's going to pull out, and they're going to get more money from selling houses when that land converts. I guess my other question is how do we make sure that we are committed to building low-income housing? We're committed to building multifamily housing? And one of the things that we have to do is make sure that developers are going to build that. And I think there should be some sort of ordinance or structure, way to say, you got to build the low-income first. And then that way, once the low-income's there and all the houses come in, the neighbors already knew the low-income or the apartments or whatever is already there. And then you don't get this bait and switch every time and then have this shortage of housing. And that leads me to a question. So on slide seventeen, we had a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent ratio of single-family homes to multifamily. Who sets that ratio? Where does that come from?
Oh, go ahead, Tyra.
I'm sorry. That policy was agreed upon by a previous council during the creation of our general plan, which was adopted in 2015.
So I'd like that to maybe be revisited through the housing process. I don't think that matches today's needs or the cost variables. I know some people have heartburn with multifamily, but to really get the affordability and the levels of housing Vacaville residents and seniors need, we've got to look at that. So if we could bring that back in the housing element or wherever that's appropriate to have a discussion, I think that would be really helpful. And then my last comment, and I'll shut up, I'm sorry. I guess, you know, it seems like the city of Vacaville for the last, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years has really focused on new development, which is great. We've got to build new homes, we need to build new communities. But in many cases, those new homes are completely unaffordable to local residents. They're huge, twenty-five hundred square foot, you know, average, average or median kind of square footage. People in Vacaville can't afford that. Your slide showed that very, very clearly. I'd really like a renewed focus on redevelopment, particularly infill redevelopment, on condos, townhomes, PUDs, things that young families, seniors, folks can afford. How do we sort of change the lens of new development and start really focusing on redevelopment? Where would that fall in the plan or the housing element? Or where would that significant shift or that refocus or discussion from council happen?
This is Erin Morris. I, that will and can happen through our Housing Element Update. A lot of that, the policy around distributing low-income housing throughout the city as an equity issue or as a fairness issue, even as a practical issue, is something we can look at. We do have to acknowledge that there's only vacant land in certain locations. But that's something, again, we look at all of our affordable housing sites as part of the housing element. And going back to the second part of your second topic area related, the housing element is another opportunity also to look at where there are opportunities for more effective infill development to create the kind of housing you're talking about, that housing that's the smaller units that are affordable to more people. Just putting it out there that those are also some of the sites that are surrounded by neighbors who may or may not be big fans of that kind of housing. But again, we look at that in an open process as part of the Housing Element Update.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for letting me take up so much time. So again, you know, the Quimby process, I'd love to have that come back on parks and schools. Really appreciate the time and explanation tonight. And, you know, I just, I think if we're going to continue building in Vacaville, we have to build what Vacaville residents need, not what outsiders need, because it's just, it's exacerbating traffic. Lines at the store, our schools are overpacked and overcrowded. We keep building these track homes that people can't afford. We have to figure out a way to build stuff for Vacaville residents. And I, you know, I'm hoping the general plan can in some way, shape, or form help us make that pivot, because we're just packing the town, and it's not benefiting a lot of local residents. And so really appreciate the presentation tonight. I know it's a ridiculously tough topic. Thank you for taking all of my silly questions and comments. I'm done.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thanks for the presentation. And we have talked a lot about workforce housing, and I've always been concerned about teachers and also young families that like Sullivan just talked about. But yesterday, I was at a meeting of the Travis Regional Armed Forces Committee, and it was very present, there was a presentation about housing and the fact that a lot of the military from Travis get an allowance to live off base because there's not enough housing on base. And that that off-base housing allowance is inadequate to, for airmen to rent an apartment or rent a house here in Vacaville. And even if it was adequate, there is a low inventory of houses for military people. And in the general report that was part of this packet, I did notice that we do have a section of land here in District Six that's sort of slated for military housing, but nothing's happening with it right now. And I understand, you know, the city doesn't build houses and we can't just say, you know, come in and build the house. But I just wanted to put it out there, the military housing is also a big need for Vacaville. And the health and location of the base is at jeopardy if we can't provide adequate housing for military. And then all the veterans that are looking for housing as well. So I know we'll talk more about this at our special meeting with the housing strategy, but I wanted to throw out military housing there. So if anyone has a rental spot, the list, the base has a list of rentals that they inspect and can tell their airmen, check out these places. And they used to have a real long list that had like eighty different places on it, and now there's only twenty places. So they're saying that if anyone knows of rental property or would like to offer rental property to military people, I can put you in contact with the housing person at base to make that happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
I guess I agree with both councilmembers, different pointed comments. It's my understanding that those items will be addressed. And just to clarify, if the housing element, housing strategies that come back, if there's any conflict with their general plan, that'll be something that'll be suggested that council consider updating. Is that correct?
Yes, this is Erin Morris again. Anything that comes out of the housing element and desire for housing policy change, we'd have to make changes to the general plan to make sure it's consistent. General plan to be consistent from start to finish. So if there is that opportunity, councilmember.
Great. And so we don't need to motion to approve the progress report.
No.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, I'm just going to make a couple quick comments. And I believe the whole council wants to make sure that we're making sure that the missing middle and everything else is being built. But as I looked through the presentation, it wasn't like Vacaville was hundreds of thousands of dollars over any other city in the county. And my concern would be, hey, let's drive the housing prices the lowest we can in Vacaville when the cities around us have the higher market, because it has to be an equal balance. And we are working hard, I know this whole city council is working hard on bringing biomanufacturing, which are very good careers. Folks are going to want to come here and purchase. And what we did when Icon came in, Icon Airplanes, is we went out and quartered them, got them here. And then all their executives and all their, the folks that were making money didn't want to come to Vacaville, so they work in Vacaville, but then they went up to Green Valley. And that money produces parks, that money produces sports fields, that money. So although I understand, and we do have a missing middle, you don't want to beat everyone to the bottom. You want to make sure there's a general balance. And we do want to have executive housing for when these folks come in to take these. And we're going to have lots of career-type jobs coming to Vacaville when this biomanufacture takes off. And it's going to take off soon. So although, you know, I think we all are in line, I just want to make sure we're making a balanced decision and not just trying to make sure that we're the lowest city when it comes to housing, low-income housing, very low-income housing. I want to make sure there's a good balance. So when those jobs come in, those folks that do have the extra money to spend and bring money into our general fund also move to Vacaville. So thank you very much. Great presentation. We'll move on to the next item. Item nine C, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next business item before you is a series of resolutions related to the procurement of ten electric fixed route buses for Vacaville City Coach Public Transit Program. Our deputy public works director, Brian McLean, has a presentation for the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council. As the city manager mentioned, the recommendation before you tonight is to procure ten thirty-five-foot battery electric buses to replace ten of our aged compressed natural gas buses. Over the course of the next few slides, our transit coordinator, Lori Demasa, and I will walk you through the many variables that have brought us here before you tonight. Primarily, those variables focus on the procurement of those electric buses, but I will also be discussing the charging infrastructure needed for those buses. Next slide. The first list of the variables is a regulation issued by the California Air Resources Board, or CARB, entitled the Innovative Clean Transit Regulation, the ICT. The ICT was passed in 2019, and it mandates that public transit agencies transition to zero emission fuels and that by January of 2029, one hundred percent of all new bus purchases must be zero emission. CARB defines zero emission as being either electric or hydrogen fueled. I'm going to pass it over to Lori now, and she's going to talk to you about our existing fixed route fleet inventory.
Next slide, please. The current fixed route fleet consists of eighteen New Flyer thirty-five-foot compressed natural gas buses. We have, they were purchased in three separate procurement cycles. We have ten two thousand nine models, five two thousand ten models, and three two thousand twelve models. Next slide, please. Having the right vehicle for the job is critical to a well-rounded transit system. Staff conducted research to ensure the best option was selected to meet the Innovative Clean Transit Regulation. Early in the research, we found the transit industry is primarily moving towards electric due to the significantly higher cost of a hydrogen-powered transit bus. With our popular on-demand microtransit program known as City Coach Direct and the continual need to deploy larger fixed route buses to support our heavily utilized routes with our local commuters and schoolchildren, it requires us to balance the transit service programs and associated vehicles to ensure Vacaville's public transit system is well-rounded. So after collecting current and historical data, we determined a rebalancing of vehicle assets between the large fixed route buses and the smaller microtransit vans is necessary. With the addition of six vans dedicated to the City Coach Direct program that was approved in September of 2021, the fact that the industry is primarily moving to electric vehicles and ensuring that the vehicle assets are balanced properly between the services, staff determined that the fixed route bus fleet can be reduced from eighteen compressed natural gas buses to ten electric buses for this vehicle purchase. Now, Brian, we'll discuss the vehicle lifecycle and the PG&E electric vehicle fleet program.
Next slide, please. Next in the line of the variables is vehicle lifecycle and PG&E EV fleet grant program. As it relates to lifecycle, the Federal Transit Administration, FTA, defines the timeframe in which a transit operator using FTA funds is allowed to replace federally funded buses. The FTA has determined for heavy buses, of which our New Flyer CNG buses are classified, they can be replaced at the twelve years of age mark, making them eligible for replacement last year in 2021. So why the twelve years? So why the twelve years? Well, that's the industry standard in recognition of the breakpoint where operating and maintenance costs begin to rise substantially, and in consideration of the replacement timeframe for new fixed route buses, which is typically eighteen to twenty-four months. Thereby, the effective age of the vehicle on actual replacement is somewhere in the fourteen-to-fifteen-year range. I'm gonna switch gears a little bit. Now that the last, that the last major variable to discuss is related to the charging infrastructure needed for these buses. In performing our research on electric buses and charging systems, we discovered the PG&E EV fleet program. For qualifying applicants, PG&E will perform the to-the-meter work to bring the necessary power to the site, which includes the infrastructure design, permitting, construction, and transformer upgrade at no cost to the city. The rema, the recommendation tonight to purchase the electric buses qualifies the city to access this program. We are estimating the value of this service to be approximately two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars in cost savings to the city. Next slide. Okay, so now that Lori has prevented, uh, presented her, uh, information regarding vehicle fleet inventory, I'd like to present these variables, uh, the various variables that we've just discussed, and a timeline and staff's rationale to bring this item before council tonight. So first, we have our ten two thousand nine CNG buses. They have reached the FTA retirement age of twelve years. We have adequate FTA funding for the placement of our buses, but the fun, but funding expiration looms, and I'll get into that momentarily. If the city were moved forward with an electric bus procurement now, delivery could be expected in summer, fall of 2023. And the city would capitalize on the PG&E EV fleet program funding before it expires in 2024. Then we have the ICT regulations, which draws a clear line as of January 2029, mandating all new transit vehicle procurements must be zero emission vehicles. And then finally, at the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting, staff heard council loud and clear that the transition to electric buses is an important goal for the city council. So with all these variables in mind, staff made the determination that now is the time to recommend to the city to make its first purchase of electric fixed route vehicles. Next slide. The various factors considered and identified and evaluated, staff began looking at a suitable battery electric bus replacement. With thirteen-plus years of experience with our current bus manufacturer, New Flyer of America, we started our search for a battery electric bus there and found that New Flyer offers a thirty-five-foot battery electric bus called the XC35. In researching the XC35, we found that Altuna, which is the National Bus Testing Facility, identified the New Flyer XC electric bus as achieving the highest passenger-per-mile fuel economy of any zero-emission bus based on the Altuna Fuel Economy Test Protocol. Additionally, the propulsion, propulsion design of the XC35 is less complex and easier to maintain, as well as offers lower operating costs compared to a combustion-engine vehicle, whether that be diesel or CNG. Satisfied with the specifications of the New Flyer XC35, staff began looking for available contracts in which Vacaville could make the procurement from. Next slide. Wasn't long before I found that the state of California had already done the procurement work for the city in their Department of General Services New Flyer Electric Bus Contract Number One Nineteen Twenty-three Seventeen B. I evaluated this contract and found that it met all the requirements of the city and Federal Transit Administration's procurement protocols. I evaluated the pricing offered within the contract and found this contract would save the city approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars per bus, or approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the ten bus procurement. Over the next several, last several months, rather, um, staff has been working with New Flyer on adding the various options needed for our operations, including a ten-bus camera system, uh, a talking bus system that it will announce stops both in English and Spanish, as well as other languages, an information system, an automatic passenger counter system, and an exterior white noise generator system to alert individuals and individuals on the street of an oncoming bus. The total project cost for the ten XC35 battery electric buses, sales tax included, is ten million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Next slide. As, as discussed at previous city council meetings, the City Coach Transit Program is funded through three primary sources. Uh, State Transportation Development Act, or TDA, funds, Federal Transit Administration FTA funds, and passenger collected fares. No city general fund is utilized in the City Coach Transit Program. Vacaville's transit program has a longstanding history of being fiscally responsible, something spoken highly of by our county MTC Commissioner Jim Spearing and STA. In that regards, shortly after our two thousand nine New Flyer buses were delivered, I set up a set-aside account for the procurement of replacement buses. We've been putting funding aside for this time of replacement, and now we have the funding proceed with this procurement. This project is fully funded through our set-aside vehicle replacement account in the amount of seven million two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of FTA funds, and approximately three point five million dollars on the TDA side, the State Transportation Development Act funds. Lori and I will be bringing the TDA request to you for council's consideration in late May, early June of this year. In regards to the FTA funding, it does have an expiration. This funding is arranged into seven blocks of different cycle funding. The earliest funding is starting to come to the attention of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and FTA, and we have been notified that they would like us to move this project along. Next slide. Okay, the project is fully funded. However, I wanna make council aware that in the last couple of weeks, uh, we have been, uh, made aware of a new, another funding source. Um, and I wanna share that with you now. It's called the California Hybrid Zero-Emission Vehicle Incentive Program, or HVIP. It's a grant program for the purchase of zero-emission vehicles. The program is sixty-five million dollars in available funds. It opens on March thirtieth. It's a first-come, first-served type of funding scenario. There is no guarantee that we would get the funding. However, I've put all the form paperwork together, talked to the right individuals, read all of the documentation as to the readiness of the March thirtieth, six AM opening, and I intend to be at my post at six o'clock in the morning on the thirtieth, caffeinated and ready to submit that application. If awarded, we are likely to see an incentive award of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per bus, or a total of one point two million dollars in project savings. Again, this is potential project savings, is not guaranteed, which is why I have not included it in the calculations of the vehicle costs and project totals in the recommendation tonight. Next slide. So as far as, uh, transit electrification timeline, if city council were to approve the recommendation to procure the ten battery electric buses tonight, we anticipate delivery of the first unit in the summer, fall of 2023. Now, how does that align with our transit infrastructure electrification project? Again, at the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting, I provided a very high-level outline of the electrification project council, and again, heard very clearly that council has a desire to move very quickly on electrification. To that end, since September of last year, staff have developed a conceptual layout of the charging system, a, a processed a contract for electrification design planner view and startup, and initiated the forms necessary with PG&E and readiness to enter into their EV fleet program. I anticipate the transit infrastructure charging system project going to bid this summer, managed by our Public Works CIP group, with an estimated completion of fall twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, which aligns with the delivery of our electric buses. Next slide. In terms of environmental fiscal and strategic goal, uh, the procurement of the battery electric buses has no impact to CEQA. In terms of fiscal impact, the project cost is ten million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three. It's fully funded via FTA funds in the amount of seven million two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And TDA, which covered, and the covered balance of approximately three point five million dollars will come from our TDA funds, which again, Lori and I will bring to council for your consideration in May or June of this year. As for the strategic goal, this project falls under initiative number four, maintain effective and efficient services. Next slide. Okay, finally, the recommendation in three parts. First, authorize the director to purchase, uh, issue or execute a purchase agreement for ten New Flyer thirty-five-foot electric, battery electric buses in the amount of ten million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars eight hundred and thirty-three, eight hundred and eighty-three, sorry. Um, second, authorize the director to file a Federal Transit Administration grant totaling seven million two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the purchase of ten New Flyer thirty-five-foot battery electric buses. And finally, amend the city's capital improvement program budget in the corresponding amount of seven million two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, accounting for the Federal Transit Administration grant funding. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Brian. I appreciate it. I'm gonna open a public comment. I'm gonna close public comment, bring you back to the city council. And I see Councilmember Silva's hand up first.
Yeah, great. Um, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian, and, uh, Lori for your presentation. Uh, really, uh, I appreciate, you know, uh, in this particular situation, you know, you took, uh, a lot of the feedback from council and, and worked that and came back with a pretty cool proposal. I'm happy to buy that coffee on, uh, three-thirty in the morning for you. I know those are kinda hard to get, uh, regardless, so, uh, won't hold it against you, um, at the state level, but, uh, definitely look into, um, uh, seeing how fast as little guys can go. And, uh, maybe the first one, we have a little party bus, uh, set up for everybody. So, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Roberts.
I just wanna thank staff for really pushing this forward. I know in September, I was pretty adamant about trying to get EV and electrification moved up in the city, 'cause it's very important. And I think a lot of people realizing now how volatile gas prices are, uh, not just for governments, but for people like commuting, as was presented in other, uh, council meetings, that eighty percent of Vacaville citizens commute, and the cost of their work has now just doubled to get to work over the past few months. And as somebody that personally owns an electric vehicle, it's, yeah, it's not just the gas, it's what you brought up, the maintenance is significantly less. Uh, no more oil changes, transmission fluid changes, spark plugs, none of that stuff. So it really brings the cost down. And with the increasing gas costs this, this last month or so, um, a lot of other cities are seeing a significant increase in ridership on their public transit. So this can come at a better time to get established, and, and a lot of other cities are now starting to look at it because of that. So it's good that we're making this a priority and getting it there before everybody else does, 'cause it just delays the, the timeline for it if we waited in longer. So, thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yeah, I, I think I kinda wanted to reiterate some of the same comments. Brian, I know we kinda threw your team through a doozy about four months ago. I'm extremely impressed at the pivot and the amount of work you've done in the meantime, and all of the turning over rocks and finding money and, and all of the different plans. So just a big thank you to you and your staff. You really pivoted hard and, and, uh, made up for a lot of lost time. And, and, uh, I'm very impressed with the amount of work that was accomplished in a pretty short period of time, and very excited to see the fruits of your labor and, and what these, uh, these buses will look like on Vacaville streets.
Councilmember Wiley.
Uh, thanks for the presentation and the good planning to start saving for the new buses when the first buses were delivered in two thousand nine. Um, I also, you said that there's like basically three sources of the money, the federal money, the state money, and then the fares. And I wondered, I knew fares were suspended during the pandemic. I don't know if they're still suspended or not, so that was my question. And then I will move this item for approval of all three sections.
Did you wanna fill that question?
Fares are still suspended, and, uh, we are evaluating, uh, fares, uh, both locally within the system, um, as well as regionally, because there, there is talk about, uh, a, more of a consolidation and, and streamlining of fares. And that, those discussions are going on with STA right now. But yes, fares right now continue to be, um, fare-free on City Coach.
Okay, thanks. So I, I make that motion to approve all three of these.
I, I have a motion, and I'll entertain the second. And then on the question, I'm gonna go back to Greg Ritchie.
It's, it's all right, I'll second it, it's your hand down.
Okay. Uh, roll call though, please.
Vice Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, great job, everybody involved, outstanding.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. We'll move to item eight D. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is a presentation on the proposed Public Works bidding prequalification requirements. Our interim Director of Public Works, Ray Leftwich, had a presentation for the council.
Right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, and all attendees. My name is Ray Leftwich, I am the interim Public Works Director. Um, this presentation is provided for discussion so that staff can get a temperature of council for potential prequalification requirements. Uh, next slide, please. A typical prequalification process, um, would be, it's a two-step process. First, you're putting out a request for the, uh, prequalification, then the request to bid to the prequal, prequalified bidders. Um, typically, it's used to ensure contractors have the necessary experience and financial backing to perform the project, where I'm sure we can also support the, the, the idea of, uh, training workers. We don't wanna be the training ground for the contractor. Um, my experience, it's typically utilized for complex projects, things like fire stations, water and wastewater treatment plants, uh, water storage pump stations, and water, uh, booster pumps. And the reason for that is a lot of those, we have exist, there are existing operations going on, and the coordination between, you know, keeping the, the water flowing or the sewer flowing, and getting the new systems in operation are extremely complex. And whereas on a typical project, it's like, if we gotta reject work or have warranty work, it's a nuisance and an inconvenience. If we have problems dealing with getting a sewer lift station online properly, it can be very, very problematic. Next slide, please. Okay, so the proposal presented, um, these are just a few of the main highlights. The full text is included as attachment one of the staff report. So it would be for projects greater than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Has apprenticeship program participation in the joint apprenticeship program approved by the state of California, or the apprenticeship program approved by the state of California with a graduation rate of fifty percent or higher, um, with at least thirty percent, uh, apprentices for the previous five years. Next slide, please. Also, it also includes a local hiring policy. The minimum of twenty-five percent of each principal craft with four or more employees shall be residents of Solano, Yola, Sacramento, Napa, Sonoma, or Contra Costa counties. Some contractors shall comply with the provisions if prime contractor does not have construction craft in force. Also includes, uh, medical coverage or make monetary contributions to health savings accounts. Next slide, please. All right, well, these are the, some existing labor laws that are pretty much gonna affect all our public works construction projects. So we do have, have a requirement, all contractors pay prevailing wage for any project, public works contract of one thousand dollars or more. So pretty much all of them, there's almost none that fall below that. And then there's apprenticeship requirements. Um, for employment of apprentices, no less than one hour of apprentice work for five hours of journeyman work. So a little bit less of a, a standard than what is, what is in the proposal. Requires the middle of contract award information applicable of apprenticeship groups that can supply premises. And it also applies all public works projects greater than thirty thousand dollars. So again, virtually all. And it's, it's a rare day that we're, uh, awarding a contract under that. Next slide, please. We've ta, also taken a look and seen what, you know, what some of our neighbors are doing. So we took a look at, um, City of Dixon, City of Davis, and they have, uh, some, some, uh, different contracting requirements that, that, just to, to take a look at again, see what they're doing. Next slide, please. So in the City of Dixon, they have an ordinance that allows that for the city engineer, the public works director is authorized to create standardized prequalification questionnaires in accordance with Public Contract Code. Um, the questions must all be objectives. There are standardized question categories or essential criteria questions. This is simple stuff like, what's the name of the contractor, license number, how long have you been in business? uh, prior history, criminal matters and civils, and this is where it's getting into a lot of, have you done something bad? So it's, it's a lot of yes or no, or how many times has it happened kind of answer. Occupational health and safety compliance, so if you, you know, have problems with OSHA, prevailing wage and apprenticeship compliance, and again, if you have fines or, or findings of non-compliance. And again, it's mostly, you know, when it gets into, like, how many violations, and so a lot of it is how many violations of law I have occurred. So that's, you know, are you, are we, we're pre-qualifying, making sure that you're not a contractor that has routinely had challenges, um, complying with the, the applicable statutes. Next slide, please. Then we looked at the city of Davis, so it was a little bit different, so it's not pre-qual, so it's just things that they have to submit with the bid. Um, bidder information in experienced form, so again, fairly similar to what was on the, the city of Dixon standardized requirements. Um, basic facts about the contract, contractor, list of some of the current projects, including the description, completion date, cost of work, experience and technical questions, and again, that is provided with the bid and not as the pre-qualification. Next slide, please. Okay, so staff, you know, we looked at, and I also talked to, to a lot of contractors, union, non-union, um, a lot of my colleagues in the construction management world. I'm, by, by trade, in addition to being a public works director, I do, do construction management for, I've, I've done it for, for numerous agencies, um. One thing that's important to understand every time, and regardless of what it is, all contract requirements will result in impacts to bid prices. And again, that is regardless of how small or well-intentioned they may be. Sometimes they just start incrementally adding up. Existing state law already provides apprenticeship and prevailing wage requirements on public works contracts, albeit it may be a lesser, lesser standard. Um, administration and pre-qualification process could result in additional costs of between ten thousand, forty thousand dollars per project. And this administrative on, on the city's side, just because you're going out, essentially going out to bid twice. So that, that range of cost is, is based on, you know, what's the level of complexity of the pre-qualification process? If it's a really simple go-no-go of a few, few items, might be less if it's requiring additional research and, and interviewing, uh, uh, prior, uh, prior agencies that they've worked for, if the, the cost could go up. And again, and then potential impacts due to a potential of reducing the pool of prospective bidders could cause an increase of up to twenty percent in the bid prices. And that's based on my discussion, again, with a lot of the contractors, both union, non-union, and construction managers, they're all experienced in, uh, public works contracting. Due to potential reductions in the bidding pool as a result of, you know, some, especially a small project, contractors might look at uh, pre-qualification process, and you know, I'm just not gonna go through the hassle, so they'll pull out. Uh, you might have some of the, some of the non-union contractors, so you know what, it's just too much of a habit. I'm not interested in going through the process of dealing with the additional requirements of, of the, uh, of the apprenticeship program. And then you can even get it with, even with some of the union contractors, um, with the locals. Because we do, some, in some crafts and, and specialties, they can be very transient in nature. Um, so having the local requirement could also be reducing that pool. So again, it's up to twenty percent. It's a little bit, you know, it's obviously there's a range. Um, next slide, please. All right, and so just for comparison, what are we looking at? So in the last three years, the city issued twenty-one public works contracts of seven hundred fifty thousand or greater totaling at, uh, forty-one million dollars. Were anticipated in the next three to four years to issue another twenty-nine construction contracts of seven hundred fifty thousand or greater totaling over eighty-eight million. You know, if I take those rates, if I go, you know, that ten thousand dollars per project, just of administrative cost, and maybe just an extra delta on the top of the bid price of five percent, that would result in about four point seven million dollars in additional expenses. And if I went on the high end with the forty thousand dollars per, per project of administrative cost and twenty percent additional, uh, cost burden, it would be eighteen point seven million dollars. Uh, next slide, please. So again, you know, this is, ultimately, this is really a policy decision by, by the city council. So, you know, here are just some, some potential alternatives. Instruct staff to prepare a staff report in ordinance for first reading approving the pre-qualification requirements proposed. Instruct staff to prepare a staff report in ordinance for first reading approving the pre-qualification requirements for city construction contracts within, within each year's estimate of one point five million dollars, or such greater amount as, as city council may deem appropriate. Or do not instruct staff to further pursue approving the proposed pre-qualification requirement. And with that, I'd like to, uh, uh, be more than happy to answer any questions, uh, that city council or the mayor may, may have.
Okay, we're gonna open up public comment. We'll start with Joseph.
Hello, um, my name is, uh, Joseph Lugas. I am a, a local, uh, resident. And I just want to say that, um, I do not support, uh, this proposal. I do not support paying restrictions and quotas on the types of apprenticeship programs that folks can train with. You are favoring joint apprenticeship programs, which, as you know, are sponsored by unions. And if one does do that, they're adding requirements, you know, to unilateral folks that aren't being imposed by joint programs. Uh, in California, any public works project over thirty thousand dollars is required to have the contractors at all tiers in clear ratio of registered apprentices to journey workers. By putting restrictions on the type of apprenticeship programs, you are limiting the number of bidders and making taxpayers foot a higher cost of building your projects. Um, if you, I urge you to not pass any discriminatory language and allow the free and open competitive bidding process to proceed.
Next caller.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council. Nicole Garing, uh, Director of Community Development for Associated Builders and Contractors Northern California Chapter. We have been supplying, uh, apprentices all the way through to, uh, skilled and trained journeymen and women to the construction industry for over two decades. In fact, we have our graduation coming up this coming Friday, where we have another ninety graduates, uh, graduating, going into the field to perform this important work, uh, for the city of Vacaville. Our graduation rates are extremely high, higher than the average industry, the industry average. So I'm wondering what, where this came from. Uh, our, our programs are gonna be impacted by this, this number of this thirty a year graduating. Um, we are small and mighty, but we train, invest in training, uh, over three million each year. And we believe in developing people, people like Eileen and Phil and Gloria, who fell in hard times, who are homeless and, and are now, you know, have now gone through our pre-apprenticeship programs and are doing, doing well, and have transformed their lives. And just because we don't have the numbers that the unions have, we are transforming lives one day at a time, making it better, and we are not in support of restricting this pipeline. We want our members to be able to continue to be able to approve, to train with us and use our apprentices, uh, on these projects. It could be impacting about four hundred apprentices' lives, and we're, we're just trying to develop lives and transform people. So, uh, we, we believe that you should, uh, use the state model pre-qualification. We absolutely believe in pre-qualification, that you should have the most qualified contractors doing the work and using the apprentices that they choose to train with. They, they don't, um, look at a program to see how many people, they're just, they're just hiring the apprentices who are being trained. I would encourage you to retake a look at this. I, I was a little bit perplexed why our organization wasn't reached out to at the beginning. Um, we, we definitely want to help, uh, help the children, help everybody get into construction. We are a pipeline, and we are, you know, we would like to continue to be able to serve the community of Vacaville. Thank you for your time.
Next caller. There you go.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, perfect. Hi, my name is Sherri. Um, I work, I'm here with Nicole Gary. Um, I also work for Associated Builders and Contractors, and I work really closely. I'll be honest, I'm not a public speaker, but I am the apprentice coordinator, and I work really close and personally with these apprentices. Um, I mean, we have numerous apprentices from your area who are on this amazing track. They come to us, they get trained to be a leader, they all want to open businesses, stay, develop their area. Um, something like this being supported is just going to completely knock the window of their skills, uh, all their hard work. Um, I know that some of the apprentices in your area are with, it's so difficult for women to get, take any more, uh, doing more in our program. Um, so I strongly am in support of women of course, says, um, urge you to maybe retake a look in keeping opportunities open for our great people. And we have some great instructors who are turning out high-quality apprentices that are doing amazing work on these jobs. Um, so I appreciate your time. I know it's like, so thank you to me.
Thank you. Next caller.
Good evening, good evening, council. I am a researcher with carpenters local one eighty, and I thank the members of the council for supporting these tremendously essential requirements. Because as the staff report observes, the city of Vacaville is poised to spend more than eighty-eight million dollars on public works projects through twenty-twenty-four, and it's of the utmost importance to consider where these monies will ultimately find home, which communities will benefit. The local hire policy stands to be a major boon for the Vacaville economy, as more than six hundred active members of the carpenters union lives here, as well as the Solano County, which is home to more than two thousand union carpenters. So thank you for supporting local businesses and workers. And as the language is written, within the identified surrounding counties, construction contractors would have a pool of more than ten thousand union carpenters. And while some may deride it, I thank you for seeing the apprenticeship requirement as important element for Vacaville, as in this county alone, there are currently more than one thousand five hundred active union apprentices, nearly two-thirds of whom are not Caucasian, and most are in the construction field. And all too often, low-road contractors fail to provide with any, any sent, workers with any semblance of healthcare, which can be an economically devastating benefit to withhold. Construction workers are constantly exposed to dangerous conditions, and an injury to a construction worker without employer subsidized healthcare can cause the worker and their family decades of undue financial hardship, which often leads to a vicious cycle of poverty. Excuse me. In addition to preventing working families from facing these types of avoidable financial healthscapes, this healthcare provision will serve as a significant recognition of an indelible worker's right to healthcare. Along these lines, it's beyond encouraging to see language addressing the enforcement of these requirements, particularly the healthcare component, as these types of do the right thing from a legislative perspective are often merely a gesture of goodwill. But the teeth of the enforcement will fasten a recognition that workers' rights and dignity are at the forefront in Vacaville. And finally, in terms of feasibility, the council should look to the successes in neighboring jurisdictions such as Davis, Dixon, Yolo County, and school districts in and around Sacramento, where similar pre-qualification requirements have been successfully instituted. I thank you again for your support for this measure and for your time.
Next caller. Caller, you have to take yourself off mute. Caller, you're still on mute.
Are you speaking with, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Roulette, members of the council. Thank you for serving our town. My name is Sean Bird. I live in Vacaville. Uh, I sent you each an email just to give a little bit about my background. One of the, I retired as a fire captain from the city of Vacaville, and one of my assignments was training officer. And we began during my tenure, the, uh, joint apprenticeship program. I can tell you that in the first year, um, the only people that graduated were those that retrospectively looked at their training to accomplish, uh, becoming an apprentice. I think it's gonna take some time. Uh, going down to, uh, slide three and the attachment one, I'm concerned with at least thirty apprentices for five years immediately proceeding submission of pre-qualification. Uh, I don't really understand that. I think it's limitations, uh, for the community of the city. Uh, small businesses are vital, a thriving community and workforce, so I'm not sure why we would exclude them. Um, like I said, I do, I have participated and did administer our joint apprenticeship program when it was first adopted. So if any businesses, contractors are new to the apprenticeship programs, they're gonna need some startup time. That doesn't mean that their apprentices are any less qualified than anybody else, but I think that number's way too high. And I think the, uh, tenure requirement of five years, I don't know where that comes from, and I don't see the benefit of it. So you can read your, the email that I sent to you, and that's pretty much my position on it. Thank you for listening.
Next caller. Next caller, you're on mute.
Hello, my name is James O'Hear. I am a painting instructor for the ABC NorCal painting program. I've been listening to a lot of people talk tonight about this program, and I'd just like to say that I don't understand how anybody's taking jobs away from unions. We're just trying to protect jobs for everybody. I know that the state is facing a craft professional demand of over five hundred thousand jobs through December twenty-twenty-six. And it doesn't make any sense to restrict one of Northern California's pipelines to the industry that has been graduating apprentices and transforming lives for over two decades. There's so many out there who need this opportunity, and we want to rebuild this construction industry. I heard Nicole earlier mention that we're graduating Friday. This is true. We have over ninety graduating um, from all different trades. I'd like to, at this point, personally invite Vacaville city council to join us and see what we're about, and see how we transform lives and create leaders for the next generation. And, uh, I just would like to say, for those reasons, I respectfully request that you give us a no vote on this. Thank you.
Next caller.
Good evening, staff and council. My name is Kyle Sworns, and I'm calling in favor of pre-qual. It's time for the workers to be heard. I have been in, in construction for almost twenty years now. We have devastating data recently released by U C Berkeley stating thirty-six percent of Californians are now in some type of supportive need. That's thirty-six percent just of California's workforce as, as one. Sadly, construction worker standards are lower. Construction workers are one-third more likely to be on some type of supportive need at forty-eight percent. So nearly half the construction workers in California need support from the government. Why are our standards lower when we build our communities, the homes we live in, the businesses we work in, including the places where we tend to hold these public meetings? We build our communities, so why are our standards lower? That's a cost of three point three five billion dollars of taxpayers' money. What if we can put something in place to help these issues that aren't addressed in the cost of development? I know having pre-qual in place will help address these concerns. You have three simple things. First, being apprenticeship, apprenticeship requirements. While everyone wants to scream there is a worker shortage, my question for a city or developer, what are you doing to help promote that next generation of workers? We all know if you build that workforce that's trained, will help promote competitive bidding with skilled workforce and not worker shortage. Let's make sure we have apprentices that are promoting through their training. Second concern is healthcare. We all know how important healthcare is after this pandemic. How much we need to make sure to have healthcare to not only protect myself, but the others around us. Last thing I want to do is send my child to school sick because I don't have healthcare for him. I would hate for my child to get sick because he was around someone that didn't have healthcare himself. Not having healthcare is a big impact on our community that isn't included in the cost of development, because it's the taxpayers that's picking up the bill down the road after the project's done. Last item is local hiring. We all know the studies that show it's the workers coming from out of the area or other states. That many leaves that local economy. Worker, workers coming from the community or surrounding area, that many stays and helps our businesses to stay open. For these reasons, I'm in favor of, of pre-qual and ask the council to support it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I see no other public comment. Oh. I have one last. Um, John?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Roulette, Council members. My name's John Bel Perio, and I am a field representative for the Carpenter's Union. I just want to address, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I had to because I got to address some of the things that have been said. So I just want to give some facts, and these are on the DAS website. That's the Division of Apprenticeship Standards. Nicole with ABC mentioned they have 400 active apprentices, 90 of them graduating this week. That leaves 310 apprentices. They cannot facilitate the need for apprentices on Vacaville's public works projects alone. And this is all, when she says 400, she means all crafts. Graduation rates for the ABC on, again, this is on the state's website, is less than 50%. They're not doing a good job. Five-year average, the importance of that is because in the last five years, their average is 23%, I'm sorry, 23 graduates. This is just, I can always speak carpenters on this. They've graduated 23 carpenters a year on average. We, the carpenters, have active right now 6,000 apprentices. We graduate on average over the last five years, 350 a year. Last year, we graduated almost 500. They graduated nine in 2021. There is no worker shortage within our union. We have 240 journeymen and 118 apprentices just in Solano, Sacramento, and Yolo Counties. If you go into Contra Costa, Napa, Sonoma, that's going to increase probably by double. The importance of this language and utilizing joint apprenticeship is, it's simple. These companies that train apprentices through these joint programs, they receive prevailing wage on these projects. But then when they leave these projects and they go work in the private industry, they continue receiving that same wage rate. As for ABC contractors, they don't. When they leave the project, their rate gets decreased when they go to a private project. These are careers we're talking about. They're not jobs. And we ask that the city of Vacaville support careers in the construction industry and ensure that the folks working on these jobs don't only get paid a good wage rate and have a career opportunity on these jobs here in Vacaville, but also when they leave. So please support this language. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close by the comment and bring it back to the Council. I have Councilmember Silva first.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray, for the great presentation and thanks for the different comments that were coming in. You know, I'm in favor of this prequal and for a couple reasons. But I kind of want to first address some of the comments. I think, you know, there's been different agreements that have been implemented in different projects. I saw one of the slides about the concern about the increase of cost to different projects. So for one example, Solano County, Solano County Office Building, that was built under agreement. And my understanding is that in itself came, came in, was completed under budget and ahead of time. And so when I'm thinking about how we best serve Vacaville and what a lot of Vacaville residents wants and what they've expressed to me throughout the years, is making sure that when we're spending money, we're investing money, and there's an opportunity to work these particular jobs is that we're making sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that that funding goes back to employing our local workforce. And that's something that I think this helps strengthen. I don't think there's anything stopping any, any other workers from working different companies. It's not asking for anything out of respect of 100%, unless, you know, I might be mistaken there. But I think that overall, I think one of the things that, that's really important for me, and I just want to put it straight out there, is that when we're investing in a lot of these community projects that we're doing our best we can to hire locally, that the folks that are working are getting a good quality healthcare system. That's extremely important, particularly even to my family. I'll put it straight out there so everybody knows. My mother, she has Alzheimer's. It's very extremely expensive. You know, I was kind of alluding to this in an earlier topic. Without her pension funds, there is no help for her. The help is, the help that will be there is unsatisfactory, in my opinion, of what she busted her butt her entire life to work for herself and provide a better life for her children. So the, and in addition to that, one of the things that I'm very truly invested in is making sure that we continue to develop our workforce and that that workforce again has those good opportunities to earn a good income. And I think ensuring that there's a level of standards to make sure that we're hiring and training and supporting apprenticeship programs is extremely important. We have different programs within our public education system with the construction trades, ensuring that there's a pipeline for good quality jobs for them to come to after they complete that is absolutely paramount. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this. I can also understand and respect some of the concerns. So I wouldn't mind supporting option number two there, supporting the ordinance and then seeing how it goes with the $1.5 million limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Roberts.
Yeah, I really appreciate the presentation, the comments. In general, I'm in favor of the prequalifications. I think it's a lot of good standards. But as like a few of the callers mentioned, I do question that graduating 30 apprentices a year on average over five years. The only reason I say that is because right now unemployment's at like an all-time high as it's been in a long time. And essentially, jobs are jobs. I don't think, our organization should be kind of punished because they're not as big as others. It's like saying you can't graduate kids from Solano College just because they're not as big as Davis. To me, that's the only issue I have. I believe the graduation rate of 50% is a good standard because that could be indicative of the quality of the school and quality of the education and the amount of time and practice students are getting. But, so I just wanted to ask the staff where that number of 30 and five years came from? Because it's very, very specific and why that particular number. Like I said, the size of school shouldn't matter. It's the quality of the education that's coming from it.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Roberts, I'll defer to the city manager on where the, on the origins of the proposal requirements.
So this was something that, you know, quite a while ago, I was talking with our former public works director about. And, but I mean, there's no real necessary specifics to it. It was kind of a target. If the Council is interested in something different, then that's something that we can explore with Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, thank you. I'm in favor of the, of option one. I just think in reading it and listening, it's, they seem like simple rules and guidelines that show that the companies that we're doing business with, with the city of Vacaville are investing in their workers, and not just their workers, but their workers' families as well. So I, you know, I, I think it's important. And I do appreciate the comments that were made on every side. But ultimately, you know, I want to make sure that these rules or whatever rules that we set help ensure that we end up with, you know, a solid quality product for Vacaville. And, you know, I think that these, these rules seem reasonable.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley. You're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I particularly liked the fact that in your initial presentation, you talked about the fact that it would very likely be an increase in cost of the project. And there was another increase that you talked about. And that made me stop and think, well, am I really in favor of this or am I not if it's going to increase the project? Because then you talked about the cumulative effect of that. But I want to say that even though the price would increase, it seems to me that the time would it decrease? Because you would have the prequalification, so you would have a pool of candidates bidding that were already vetted. So is that correct, that it would decrease the time? And then I also really think that this Council has talked a lot about local hires, and that would help with the local hires. And the fact that you have, you know, several counties is good because we know Solano County can't provide everyone that we would need. And the health coverage is really important for the workers. And so that's an excellent piece too, and the quality of the workers. I do understand that a lot of apprenticeship programs might not meet these thresholds. And I do feel like apprenticeship programs are real important, starting at the high school programs and so forth. So we might be able to adjust a little bit on the apprenticeship program qualifications. And I am also changing, open to changing the amount from 750,000 because the cost of building has skyrocketed and labor and everything else. So I do think that if we are looking at this, we should raise the limit to like 1.5 million or, because, you know, some of the houses we were talking about are, are in that ballpark of 750,000. So those are my comments, and I am generally in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I share some of the same questions and kind of sentiment, I think, as the rest of the Council. I do question 750. That sounds a bit low. And looking at some of those projects, I mean, it is really minor, like park upgrades and repairs with probably specialty vendors that might be, you know, that might be kind of hard. So I am sort of interested in maybe, you know, increasing that dollar threshold, the number two. Did seem a little more reasonable to me, especially with construction costs. But, you know, I also understand the 750. I think I don't quite understand the, the numbers for the apprenticeship graduation rates either. It doesn't quite make sense to me. I do feel like it does sort of box some folks out. So I, I share some of the questions from Councilmember Roberts or Vice Mayor Roberts. And I know staff is in sort of an awkward position here in that they, you know, some of this, it's hard to answer some of these questions and kind of do a deeper dive on some of these things. But I do have some questions in that particular category. I, I think the thing, though, that really just kind of strikes me, you know, I've been in government service now for 16 years. And, you know, you have government employees who have, have these benefits and these wages and these programs they fought for, and they've earned. And, you know, they have stable pensions and good healthcare, and they take care of their families, and they take care of their employees. And then we contract out this work, and we bring in folks that, you know, are getting paid bare bottom, bare minimum, you know, no healthcare, no pension, no benefits. And then honestly, I see a lot of these folks come back through my doors at social services. You know, it's, if you're not paying for health insurance through the employer, we're going to pay for it through Medi-Cal. And so you put it back on the taxpayer one way or the other. And, and I truly believe that employers should pony up. You know, I, I deeply believe in the healthcare provisions of this, the local hire policy. We've talked about numerous times. And I think, you know, if we're really saying that we want living wages for our staff and we want to, we want to make Vacaville a place where we get that median income up, we have to do things like this. And so, you know, I think we also shouldn't do it blindly, sort of like the Oak Grove Project this morning. Maybe as a part of the motion today, whatever we end up choosing, we can maybe have staff come back to us in six months or a year and actually tell, what was the cost escalation? What were the delay? What changes did you actually see? It's interesting. If you Google some of this information, there's zero conclusive evidence. There's studies that show this, and there's studies that show that. It would probably rely on my common sense to say that, yeah, it probably will have some moderate cost increases. But again, that's going to local families and local trades folks that are working these jobs. So I'm generally amenable to the plan. You know, I have the same questions, I think, as Councilmember Silva and Councilmember Roberts, and I think Wiley had a question or two as well on the selection of the actual graduation rate requirement, as well as the 750, to me, seems a little low. But, but I do like the idea in general. And I believe Solano County also has this in place. That wasn't mentioned on the call earlier. So it is pretty widely used in the area. So anyways, I'm generally supportive. I have a couple of questions, but I like it. And I would like staff to bring some assessment back, maybe 12 months down the road if we proceed with this tonight.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I was absolutely disappointed with the staff presentation. I believe Councilmember Sullivan said it best. Anyone can go on and see that major universities have done studies, prequal, PLAs versus, and you can come up with, it saves money, you can come up with it's more than. And I, and I believe our staff should really take the middle of the road. You know, you could have, and I talked to the city manager, you could have came in and said, hey, it could save us money, or it could cost us 40,000. I think, and I'm really disappointed with Ray Lefwitch, you know, when he's like, hey, I talked to a bunch of people, and they all said, you know, this is going to cost us more. It's almost childish to, you know, come out and just like, yeah, well, I talked to, you know, if you have really good evidence, then bring it. You have really good evidence that this is going to make the project more expensive. But I, I don't believe it does. And I don't believe it does because they're doing it all over California. SQUAD was recently that passed the exact same thing, the Solano County Water Agency. We mentioned a few other places that are around, but they're all over the place. I believe Councilmember Sullivan said Solano County has had a PLA in place for a long time. We use prequal for our water treatment plant. I just don't, you know, I don't buy in that every project's going to be more expensive. Every project's going to be a huge headache. And then Ray also mentioned that now you got to go out in two processes. And this is to answer Councilmember Wiley's question. You don't have to go out in two processes. You have the prequalification and the specs. If you qualify, then you're good to bid it. If you don't qualify, well, then you're not good to bid it. You don't have to say, hey, everybody, we need a prequalification. Stop. Hey, everybody, we're going to bid now. Now we have two processes. Now it's going to cost staff time. That's not true, and that's not how all the other folks are doing it. I think it's real easy just to say, hey, you know what? There's a lot of folks around that are doing this. And we could have taken comparisons from other folks, other cities around. So I was disappointed because it just felt one-sided, and, and I don't like the staff to do that. I like you to bring an objective opinion and say, hey, it could, you know, this thing said, it actually saves money. Moving from that, the state of California doesn't limit anybody from starting apprenticeship programs. But one of the callers said, hey, I started my own apprenticeship program. I was a firefighter. I started my own. They don't limit anybody from doing apprenticeship programs. You have a valid way to get an apprenticeship program going. You can go up and get it going. And then I'm just going to start quoting a lot of what the ABC said. I have nothing against the ABC. They do have an apprenticeship program. They bombard us with information all the time about how many people they're graduating. I just happened to Google their website. They've been around since 1950. 1950, they claimed to have 22,000 members. So you're, you're not even graduating 1% of your members a year. So are you really invested in training? Or do you just say you're invested in training? You know, it's, there's a huge difference. And you can't run around and claim, hey, this is what we love, but then you don't graduate anybody. And so I was disappointed in that. You know, we're talking about, if you talk about the amount of people out in the workforce in the construction industry, you should be able to graduate 30 people. We're talking about 30 individuals a year if you're really invested in training. So a little bit disappointed with that. I did remember a caller called in and talked about 50% of construction workers in California live on the government subsidies. 50% of everyone that's swinging a hammer, and that's right there on our projects, are living on government subsidies. And why is that? And I can't remember which Councilmember said it, but it's mostly because contractor will come in, they'll land, they'll underbid a project. Lots of times, there's the underground economy that we've all talked about. It's horrific. It's brutal. It's a crime scene. You know, it's basically human trafficking when they're bringing folks around, not treating them correctly, not paying them correctly, using them for their own benefit. And all we're doing in this section is, all we're doing is saying, we believe in training, and we believe in good training. We believe that everyone deserves medical that's out there on a prevailing wage job. Those folks that don't know, prevailing wage pays for medical. But if you don't have a medical program, then you just hand the employee the money. Then that employee has to go out and find his own plan. And they don't. So if you don't have a medical plan, then you're just taking the money. And then I believe it was Councilmember Sullivan said, you know, now they're using our subsidies again. I believe it was like, I can't, now I can't remember, but it was billions of dollars a year that us and municipalities are paying in for people that aren't getting treated correctly out on these job sites. So all, all, all we're doing is saying, do we believe in the apprenticeship? So all, all, all we're doing is saying, do we believe in the apprenticeship? Do we believe in medical? Uh, do we believe in local hire? And I think all of us on this council believes in that. Um, I have, you know, the amount of construction, and if it's $88 million for the next year, we want to make sure that we have the highest trained, the best workers out there that have a great paying job and medical benefits, including their family and keeping, um, those folks, especially our local folks, we don't want people coming in from Fresno, Bakersfield, and then running off with our money. These are the folks that we want to make sure we're taking care of and we want to make sure that they have a good paying job. And if they're going to stay on our projects and they're building our buildings, we want to make them sure they're highly trained. So I think saying 30 people a year, I think it's too low, honestly, but I think, um, the number came out because that's trying to be, uh, a, a happy median. Again, it's less than 1% of what they claim for their workers and that's, and then that's also disappointing. So I, I'm in favor of the first one. Um, if we get this passed tonight, I'd be willing to listen to anybody that makes a motion, so I'll entertain motion. And, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Silva.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, just to reiterate, um, you know, uh, thanks, Ray, for the presentation. I know you're trying to, you know, present, uh, where you can, but I, I fundamentally agree with a lot of the comments that Councilmembers shared. Um, and just kind of going with, with the number, uh, what I'm hoping is that we kind of, we try this out, uh, the 1.5 and then, uh, see how it works out and then, uh, adjust it from there. Um, so I'd like to make a motion of instruct staff to prepare a report and ordinance, uh, as described in option two there.
That's a motion for the 1.5 amount threshold?
Yes, sir.
I'll take the second.
Mr. Roberts, I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Stockton? Councilmember Ritchie?
Sorry, my mute, sorry.
No problem.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes, but I just want to say that number two says 1.5 million or greater. So if we're going with number two, it's 1.5 or greater.
Silva, Silva mentioned the threshold at 1.5. We could have chose any amount, but he mentioned 1.5 and that's the motion.
Oh, so that's what it is, just that? Okay.
Just that, 1.5.
All right. Sorry, repeat that, Mayor.
So you, your motion was everything 1.5 and greater for any project 1.5 or greater, it's not a greater amount, it's just everything 1.5 or greater than that, correct?
As described in bullet point two, yes.
Okay. I, I hope that clarifies. Councilmember Wiley?
All right, so then you're saying that it will not ever come back and say, okay, we're going to change it to 2 million. So 1.5 will be the lowest, anything 1.5 has to have a prequal. Okay, that, that does clarify it because number two says it could be that or it could be one or the other. So, all right, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor O'Leary?
Absolutely, thank you. Um, number 10, item 10 is City Manager's Board. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have just two items. Um, one is real quickly, um, we note on the night's agenda that we do not have a COVID update for the council, um, but I did want to mention that at the last city council meeting, there was a couple of items, uh, related to this conversation or this topic of COVID and AB 361 as it applies to the subject of, um, in-person or virtual meetings. Um, questions that came up were related to, are there special circumstances allowable, um, without the passage of AB 361 for, um, you know, working around the, the Brown Act? And then there were also some questions about, uh, convenience sick for our, um, viewing audience for, uh, hy- different types of hybrid models, um, to, uh, broadcast our meetings. And so, uh, what we will be doing is, is at your next week's special meeting, uh, we will have an update for the council to have that conversation because, uh, as it's currently, um, working right now, the resolution that the council passed at, uh, the last meeting will have expired prior to your next regularly scheduled meeting on April 12th. So it will be important to have that conversation next week. So, uh, stay tuned. Uh, the next item, um, if Crystal can pull that up for me real quick, it's just a friendly reminder to our council and our community that we will be hosting or conducting our second, uh, Let's Make a Difference event, um, on Saturday, April 2nd, uh, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We're going to be in the neighborhood of Climate Drive, um, lots of good, uh, opportunities for some volunteers to join us and make a difference in this particular community with some cleanup activities that we have planned. Um, so if anybody's interested, please scan that QR code or visit our website and sign up to volunteer. Um, there will be, um, lots of work opportunities, but some good food and, um, just lots of appreciation for your, uh, dedication to our community. So with that, I'll, um, wrap it up and turn it over to council.
Um, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Silva?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so just real quick, uh, last couple of weeks, I was able to attend a couple of different performing arts activities. One was through a local, uh, dance group called Bliss. Uh, they're pretty amazing, took my son out, um, so really enjoyed their performance and I saw on social media that the group of youth, um, I think it was ages 13 to 16, apologize if I got, or 17, uh, apologize if I got that wrong, uh, they won first place, so congratulations to them. Um, you know, Vacaville's, you know, pretty heavy, uh, sports town and, um, and on, there's a lot of other folks that have a lot of different passions and talents, so, uh, I just really want to, uh, express my gratitude, um, to Fay, uh, for, for inviting us out and, uh, really enjoyed the youth. So, uh, please, uh, let them know to keep enjoying their passion and, and living their life to the fullest. Uh, the other performance I was able to, uh, attend with, uh, the family was, uh, Star Round Theater's performance, the youth's, uh, performance of Frozen Two, or Frozen Junior, excuse me. Um, never seen the movie, um, but it was, uh, was pretty cool and, um, Olaf, we have, um, I'm a little biased, um, but, uh, he was a, a good friend of, of our, of our sons, of our families. Um, so it was like a, a, a double, a double win out there, but he was absolutely amazing as were the other kids. So, um, really appreciate the creativity and dedication that, uh, all the families supporting their kids to be able to engage, uh, in that activity. Um, you know, it, it was, uh, well worth it. Um, another cool thing that kind of came out of there that they're raising funds for, uh, was to, to, uh, raise money, um, to ensure that, uh, foster kids had access to attend, uh, the, the theater, um, showings. And also they, uh, provide scholarships to make sure that no kid, uh, you know, is, is turned away, uh, that money isn't a barrier to access that, uh, form, form of art. So, uh, just wanted to share that with the community. Thank you.
Yeah, just, I wanted to thank, uh, Rika and George Anne really quickly, uh, for their assistance over the last couple of weeks. We have stood up a pretty, uh, robust and intensive, uh, neighborhood study project to really sort of, uh, increase and enhance, um, the living conditions at a, a couple really high-density, low-income apartment complexes, also provide much safer routes to school, uh, to, to the kids in the, in the Payden neighborhood. We've had a couple actually fatalities, uh, over the last couple of years and numerous vehicle on pedestrian collisions and it's just become a very unsafe environment for a lot of folks, um, as well as facilitate some issues with, um, a couple of local trailer parks, one, one of which is a, a senior mobile home park, um, that's having some issues with crime and, and other, other items. And ultimately hopefully culminating in sort of the rebirth or rehabilitation or relaunch of the Mariposa Neighborhood Center, uh, into something really valuable for this neighborhood. So, uh, Rika, through, through her assistance, we actually applied for a pretty sizable planning grant. We were awarded that about a month ago. The consultants have started, um, and we're looking to kind of coalesce a community vision for District Four, particularly around the kind of Alamo Gardens area. Um, and we had our first meeting last week with, uh, quite a few folks. We had school board members, we had principals, teachers, staff from the district, staff from the Levin, staff from the Boys and Girls Club, we had people from the neighborhood and city staff, really starting to have some intensive discussions on how we elevate this portion of town and how we start bringing some resources back to sort of a forgotten neighborhood. So just wanted to thank all of the folks for participating. Uh, this is how I'll be spending my district dollars, uh, hopefully kind of, you know, really bringing some resources to the families in this part of town. Uh, and I was just very proud of the first kickoff meeting we have. We have three or four more planning meetings and, and hopefully we'll be bringing some information back to council, but very exciting process and big thank you to Rika and George Anne for their help.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yeah, thank you. Just have a couple of things. Uh, Councilmember Wiley already touched on a little bit was, we met with the Travis Region Armed Forces Committee and the big, big thing I touched on was the housing for the base. And like you mentioned, there's only a finite amount of housing on base, which is controlled by a third party, so a lot of people do live off of base. And they're given what's called BH, uh, Basic Sustenance or Sustenance for Housing, and that's dictated by essentially Congress, so the ones that approve the raises, increases or decreases based on that. And it's, it usually trails quite a bit to what the actual economy is looking like. So while we got a 5% increase in BH this year, we're well aware that the housing market's increased about 20 or 30% over the last year and a half. So it hasn't quite kept up, so there's people living 30, 40 hour away from Travis. And one thing that it contributes to is community health assessment that the federal government does for the bases. And what that does, that determines like how healthy the community is around the base and if it's worth keeping the base there. So if you can't, if, if there's no place for these people to live when they get stationed in Travis, that negatively affects the community health assessment. And that plays a contributing factor when they start shutting down bases for budgetary reasons, that, that may put something on a chopping block. Granted, Travis is a pretty large base, it's very unlikely they'll cut it, but they've cut a lot of other bases in the past that nobody thought would ever go away. So it's just something to keep in mind, we, we need to work very closely with the base because if it wasn't for Travis, there would not be a Fairfield or Vacaville, at least if extended is right now. I wouldn't be here because that's where my grandfather got his parents through Travis. Um, and, uh, another piece is, uh, another topic, uh, since we, we're getting the solar buses coming in and Councilmember Sullivan and I have worked with finance and we got this numbers for the energy uses. So Vacaville pays roughly about 5 million a year in electrical costs, BGE. And with the buses, that's only going to increase, probably increase pretty substantially. And so I, I'd like to ask the city to start looking into making Vacaville a net zero city, um, because while make costs quite a bit upfront, it's something that'll pay for itself easily with like a 10 to 15 years and then hopefully like Woodland's model start generating income, a revenue stream to help fund other things as well as not having to pay for electricity at that point. I think the electric vehicle plan, electrification goes hand in hand with solar or other, or some other type of renewable energy. Uh, so I'd really like staff to start looking at that, uh, especially if we are starting to get the buses next year. And the last thing I wanted to touch on, uh, it's a little, little over a month away, uh, but May has a few different aspects to it. So you have Memorial Day, uh, it's also, uh, Mental Health Awareness Month. And I know the federal government state recently passed, uh, 988, alternative to 911 for mental health crisis, but that doesn't go into effect till July. There's one thing I'd really like to ask city if it's possible, do, I know it's only a month away, but do a big mental health push, uh, do a campaign with flyers, social media push about suicide hotlines and mental health hotlines until that 988 gets established in the state. Um, yeah, because I know between the military, it's roughly about 22 suicides a day. It's actually probably higher because not all states report that. And public safety is right there behind it. I think there are like the 15 to 17 suicides a day. Um, and last few years, the number of lives lost in public safety has eclipsed, uh, those that have died in the line of duty. So I think, uh, for the month of May, that'd be something really good, uh, to push for. And yeah, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
Uh, thanks. I will just echo the, the performance by Bliss was a great performance, so I was really happy to be there. And that's, you know, just a business in, in Vacaville, but it's so much more than a business because they really care so much about the kids and what they do and their mental health and, and getting along with each other. The other thing was I did attend a meeting by the, uh, Yolo Solana Air Quality Board and they are also responsible for some of the money for charging stations and buses and things like that. So it's a real important, um, committee and it's in, interesting to see what we're doing for the environment in the county. And finally, uh, along with the mayor, on Saturday night, we were, um, at the American Legion Hall, the Veterans Hall, because the American Legion's Boy State speakers were there. And there were seven remarkable young men who, you know, really did a great job interacting with people and, um, speaking and they were, um, the Boy State honorees and they talked a little bit about their experience. So I appreciated being able to do that. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I, I wanted to, um, just thank all of the, the folks that came out to Vacaville American, um, Little League, saw, um, about, I want to say anywhere from, um, 500 to 800 people out there. The kids all dressed up, it was good to see kids at the park, um, got to have some great conversations with parents and coaches. Um, I just want to say, I'm, I'm really excited that we're finally getting ready to talk about Measure M and investing in our parks. Um, it's clear to me that we have, um, that we're, that we're short on, on fields and, and courts and different things for our kids to do. Um, the other thing, you know, with this, the Centennial Master Plan, um, in District One, I would really appreciate, um, you know, some public feedback, um, people reaching out about some of the things that they'd like to see out there. I know that the, it's been a while since we've done some outreach on that, but I'm hoping that with, uh, Measure M coming up in the, in the three by three with the, uh, Parks and Rec Commission, that we can really get some things done. Um, because, you know, I, I was out there for, you know, quite a while. Vacaville gets hot, there's not a lot of shade out there, there's not a shade structure. I mean, there's, it's, it really needs some love. And so, um, I'm hoping that when we, when we, um, get to the Measure M stuff, that we can really think about some of these things and, and really using that taxpayer money, the, the Measure M funds to do something amazing for Vacaville, for our kids and for the people that utilize the park. Um, I really appreciate the council comments about, uh, mental health awareness. Um, I think all of us are on the same page of recognizing that mental health crisis throughout the country, certainly in our state, county and cities, um, is, is out of control. Um, I, I would, hearing the number of law enforcement and military folks, um, but certainly we're responsible for our first responders here in Vacaville, would, um, would love to see us try to maybe do more, maybe come up with a fund or, or some way to get these folks the, uh, help that they need, um, if they need it. And so, um, I, you know, I, I, I don't know if this is the right place to ask, but I would, I would certainly like to think that if we have first responders that, that need help, that need counseling or to go and, and get some assistance, that, that the city would be helping them in obtaining it. So, um, thank you, uh, everyone for your comments today and I, I'm excited to see some of the projects that we talked about today, uh, happen.
Yeah, thank you. And, um, yeah, you know, I, I was going to mention something else about the, uh, the construction workers since we just came off that, you know, construction workers, honestly, and I had no idea until recently, but they're three times more likely, uh, to commit suicide. Um, and it's staggering because I always thought it was military and, and, uh, um, public safety. So, um, I think there's a lot of, uh, people out there struggling and, um, I think, yeah, there's a lot this council can do. And so I appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, on a good note, um, it is Women's History Month and, uh, this council, um, did a proclamation for Women's History Month, uh, we're doing a proclamation for Education and Sharing Day. Um, we did, um, the mayor's, uh, accommodations for, um, uh, Jeanette Wiley mentioned it for the, what, um, I'm going to, I don't want to say Boy Scouts, but, um, and so, and I know that, um, Councilmember Sullivan, uh, brought up another resolution that we'll be bringing back. So, um, this council's doing fantastic work, really appreciate everything you guys are doing out there. Uh, lots of stuff going on now that we're back out in the public and, uh, lots of things, lots of events coming up. Of stuff going on now that we're back out in the public and uh lots of things, lots of events coming up. Very excited to get back to work and and see the folks and shake hands and and get out there and uh and and do the work that we're doing. So I appreciate this council for everything. Uh, and with that, uh, we do have closed session. Um, but we will not be reporting out anything tonight. So with that, good night, Vacaville.